Do we get all to stand for the pledge?
Dr. Robb, please.
Mike, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Aye. Pledge is that we are the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces and for Senator John McCain?
Thank you.
Next public participation, Walter.
Nice, 200 people. How many on the list? 200 people. Two. Who? Leah.
Evening. Lee Gill, Meadowbrook Hill. I request, no, I implore Mayor Bass and all town council members to withhold the Facilities Utilization Committee reports to impartially reevaluate the candidates selected before going forward. Mr. Mayor, you campaigned on transparency and inclusion. Now is the time to prove it. There are definite conflicts of interest among the members of the Facilities Utilization Committee to wit. Wendy Follenbach, Board of Education member, which board refused to move to John Pettibone's property. Paul Sizmansky, Town Council member, not a professional structural engineer, as they say, a proctologist is not a colorectal surgeon. Tom Pillar, published newspaper articles against saving the Pettibone Building in favor of teardown. Nick Pooter, served for months on the new Community Center Committee, and it's a conflict to serve on both committees and yet be Chair of the Facilities Utilization Committee. Joe D. Gregorio, again, a conflict to serve on both committees. He did serve on the community center up until the new baby came. Congratulations, Joe. In the fall of 2015, there were 25 members of the John Pettibone School Committee, one building being evaluated by 25. Yet, you only named nine candidates to evaluate multiple facilities. This must be changed. The importance and qualifications of the Facilities Commission, or Committee rather, cannot be underestimated. You must publicly solicit the best qualified, non-biased, and apolitical members and remove those with existing conflicts and potential conflicts of interest. Hire economic development and structural engineering professionals to lead this Facilities Committee. We must know what we have and what to plan for, very likely more classrooms in a few years. The obvious risk and potential liability for New Milford of an insufficient and self-serving study performed by an ethically challenged group, better described as nonpartisan, clique, lacking professional expertise, will be a major expense New Milford cannot afford. These decisions definitely affect our town long-term. Costly, irresponsible, short-term actions will be your administration's legacy. And Mayor Bass, you deliberately did not refer to our new Community Center Committee in your spectrum interview for the Facilities Utilization Report. We're not invisible. We've been working hard. It takes hours of work. We would like some recognition because we are working for the entire community. Yet, this Facilities Utilization Committee included unsubstantiated financial data before the Community Center Committee completed its mandated study. It's ongoing. We don't know what the results will be. How can you say costs are this, or inflation is that, when you don't know what we're working with yet? We're still in a survey portion. How do you create numbers before the needs are determined? The town hired a real estate brokerage firm to market town properties, including East Street. This was publicized. This is well-known. If there are offers, why do we not know? There are rumors, substantial rumors, that there have been offers, good offers, sound offers, that don't require give-backs from our town to develop East Street within the guidelines to keep it on the historical look and to serve the community.
Leah, a minute, please.
Why include East Street in the Facilities Utilization Committee study if this property is on the market? Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.
Thank you.
Jeff McBride, please.
Jeff McBride, 288 Kent Road. Good evening, Mayor, everyone. I heard a rumor, okay, and it came from a reliable source, that some of the people on the committee for John Pettibone's school are saying they'll spend funds for any improvement the way they want. Well, I was at the initial meeting, and I believe our mayor, Mr. Bass, was quite direct when he said that the committee would make no decisions. They would present their findings, and then the mayor and the town council would make the decision on what's going to happen with the future of that facility for the town of New Milford and its citizens. Am I correct, sir?
And it would go to referendum, or the public would opine on what to do? Yes, sir.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Earlier this year in June, I posed a few questions to the town council, and as of yet, I have not received an answer from one council member. One of the questions was what money from the Connecticut Law for Education reaches this town? In the 2016 year and the 2017 year, their final tallies totaled $122 million allocated for education, and I want to know how much is New Milford getting out of that $122 million? That doesn't include this year. So I would like, I'd like to have an answer on that. Another question is, what is the answer for a 2,870% increase for Sarah Noble Intermediate School for 2017 for books? And this year, an additional 950% increase for the same line item? Okay, that's 3,820% increase for this one line item in two years. Maybe the books are gold-lined, I don't know, but that's, that's an awful lot of money to spend for books. 3,820% increase. You know, why, why are we letting our tax dollars get wasted this way? That's not right. Just to make sure that these things are all right and that I may or may not have made a mistake on these numbers, I'll be researching this all very extensively and present my findings to you in the very near future. We have to stop this crazy kind of spending by the Board of Education for unnecessary Concerning John Pettibone's school, if we do spend money on John Pettibone's school and it becomes a viable entity for the town again, we need to be spending our money and our time and our effort on technical skills. Because you look at the percentage of students that go to college versus the percentage of students that can't afford to go to college and they work at McDonald's, or Dunkin' Donuts, Burger King, or Five Guys, or Walmart, or whatever, for a minimal weight. So we need to have technical facilities put into that building if we keep it so that they can learn a trade, like electrical, plumbing, carpentry, you name it, HVAC, there's a whole variety of things. And if, if the town incorporates the right kind of businesses for these schools, it can generate a lot of money there, as well as teach the kids a trade. So I'm asking you folks to please take serious issue with some of these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Jan, with the wish, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, pardon.
Can I have a minute to add to the public?
Check one. Mr. Mayor.
The council would have to waive the rules.
I move to waive the rules to allow her to speak.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Come on up, Lucy. Yes, ma'am.
I'll be way under four. I just wanted to give a shout-out to Meadow Brook Gardens, oh, I'm sorry, Lucy Wildrich, 6th South Main Street. And I just want to give a shout-out to Meadow Brook Gardens for their amazing donation of the time, Rich Rose Yellow, and three of their guys who's regrettably, whose names I regrettably don't have, who put in three full days of back-breaking labor in terrible heat to completely clear the banks of the river along the Riverwalk. And it is beautiful. It just is, it reopens that incredible vista that we have and forget when things grow up on those banks. It's really a spectacular job, and I implore the town, Town Council, to do whatever's necessary to make sure that town staff has the resources they need to maintain the bank in that condition. It's such an important asset, along with maintaining the green areas and flowering gardens, which have improved over this summer, and it's been really terrific to see, and I hope that we are able to continue to put dollars towards that, because I believe that improving the first impressions of this town is, provides economic development benefits. And I think it's really important. So thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Hope we can have our first team, which will be the eight cast.
So, what we're doing tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is we have such a success with our softball and baseball programs here in New York. And you'll see, because of the great coaching and organization we have, we have a lot of champions here tonight. And start with you guys, okay? So I'm going to read off some names. If I get them wrong, tell me, okay? All right. All right. So where's Tierney? How about Merri?
Bray.
Bray, okay. So I'm going to read yours, and then everybody else, I'm just going to read your name, because it says the same thing. So this is how proud the town is of you guys, okay? So congratulations to number eight, Merri Bell, New Milford Chaos 8U Softball Team, for your first-place finish in the 2018 Connecticut Bayou softball 8U State Championship. Your team represented the town with honor and pride. So you guys keep up the great work and keep doing it year after year, and we're really proud of you, okay? Outstanding job. Congratulations. Caitlin, get a little more. Oh, there we go. Here's yours, too. Congratulations. And how about me? Congratulations. Oh, congratulations. Oh, there we go. How about Michaela?
Hi.
Is she here? Okay. Well, your coaches will have her. How about Haley? Very proud of you guys. How about Krista? Oh, congratulations. Congratulations. Did we have everybody? Did everybody have theirs? Everybody have theirs? Now we got to do coaches. Coach Bob Dulette. How about Coach Ray? How about Coach Drew? Okay, going to take it for dad?
I'm going to take it for dad.
All right. How about Coach Jerry? Thank you so much. We're so proud of you guys.
Both sides of the fair.
All right. Nice lady, she wanted to take a picture of you guys.
Hey, everybody? I look over here. Look, kneel down. Kneel down.
The Chaos, right?
There you go, baby. Chaos. Look here, Drew, step.
You guys know why you're here? Yeah. You guys had a great, great season, and the town is super proud of you guys. Super proud. We're here, all these people are here, say congratulations. You did great for New Milford, so we're proud of you. Okay, so I'm going to say names. Just let me know if you're here, raise your hand. I'm going to read the first one, the whole thing, and then I'm just going to call out everybody else's name, okay? All right. So is Elaine, I mean, who's Elaine? Alana. See, tell me. Say, hey, save my name. Okay. So Alana. Congratulations to number 10, Alana Beating, of the New Milford Chaos 10 and Under Softball Team, for your third-place finish in the 2018 Connecticut Bayou softball 10U State Championship. First place finish in the 2018 New England Bayou softball 10U Regional Championship. And first place in the 2018 Rhode Island CLCF Bombers Summer Slam Tournament of Champions. Your team represented New Milford with honor and pride. Keep up the great work, and the town is very, very proud of you, ladies. Excellent job. Congratulations, Kelly. Congratulations. Leah? Congratulations. Congratulations. And is Elena here?
Yeah.
And Bray. And Coach Joe. Coach Rob?
No.
Okay. And then Coach Michelle.
The girls have done more special accomplishment than who's brave enough to say it in front of all these people. But ahead of us. Where are we, where are we going on Friday night?
Fenway Park, you know, where the Rock and Friends.
Oh, yeah.
It's Bayou night at Fenway, and so all of the regional winners will be recognized. And so, our team will be recognized at Fenway on Friday night against the Mets, so the Red Sox.
Oh, you guys are playing my teams.
We're very excited. We wanted to also say good-bye.
Awesome. Thank you, ladies.
And we also have our regional tournament book that so many wonderful people in this town were so gracious. We want you guys to have a copy so you can check it out. We are happy to host this year, and yes, we're very excited, so.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. So you ladies know why you're here? We congratulate and congratulate you guys on a great season, and we're proud of you. Proud you're wearing those colors, proud you're representing your town as you do. We just wanted to say thank you. So, what I'm going to do is read the first full one, and then I'll just call out your names, okay? First one is Mia here. Thank you. Mia, congratulations to number 34, Mia Antonucci, of the New Milford Chaos 12 and Under Softball Team, for your first-place finish in the 2018 Connecticut Bayou 12U State Championship. Second place finish in the 2018 New England Bayou 12U Regional Championship. First place finish in the 2018 Fairfield County Bachelor Pitch League End of Season Tournament. Your team represented the town with honor and pride. Ladies, keep up the great work. Hannah, congratulations. Congratulations. Mia?
She's not here.
You guys down here? Rachel?
Hi.
Okay. How about Carly? Yeah. Congratulations. Coach Frank? Thank you, ladies.
Picture.
All right. Have a good fall.
Thank you. Give me a picture.
Ladies, you're awesome.
All right. Good job.
I need to stop that, man. I'm a champion here. Hello, ladies. How are you? Do you guys know why you're here? So the town's here, thank you. So proud we are of you guys. Outstanding job. We're a fellow with pride, representing our town like you do. We just wanted to say thank you. And we honor you. You guys are the top dogs. A little ones look up after you guys, and we appreciate your leadership. We wanted to say thank you. So I'm going to read the first one, and it means everything to everybody else, and then I'll call your name after, okay? So is Jordan here? Okay. Congratulations, number four, Jordan Beebe, of the New Milford Chaos 14 and Under Softball Team, on your first-place finish in the 2018 USSA Brown and the Heat 14 Tournament. Second place in the 2018 14 USSA Connecticut State Championship. First place in the 2018 Connecticut Bayou softball 14U State Championship. And third place in the New England Bayou softball 14U Regional Championship. Your team represented the town with honor and pride. And we really appreciate your, your guys' leadership, the way you wear your colors, and the way you guys have the technology. The town's very proud of you. Come on in, gentlemen. What's great about this town, as you can see, especially with the organization, lots of winning, lots of champions, and here we got on the gentleman's side as well. I want to congratulate you gentlemen on a great season. Wearing our colors with pride as you do, representing our town the way you do. So we can't thank you enough. Very, very proud. So I'm going to read off the first name, and then I'll just call your name off from who you're here. Nicholas Prohle? How about Cameron? All right, so Cameron. Congratulations, number 34, Cameron Cretio, and New Millford Regulators, 13-100 Babe Ruth Team. Your first place finish in the 2018 Babe Ruth 13 U District 4 Championship. Second place finish in the 2018 Connecticut Babe Ruth 13 U State Championship. Your team represented the town with honor and pride. Keep up the great work. Very, very proud of you guys. Outstanding job, the way you represent our town. Jacob? Uh, Luke? Nope, nope. Uh, Zachary? Yes. All right. Ty? Nope. Eric? All right. What happened? Nope. Uh, Coleman? Nope. About, uh, Mr. Toots? Coach Chris? Yes. Sir, thank you. All right, congratulations, congratulations. So you guys are here tonight. We want to thank you, the town, for wearing your colors the way you do, with pride and honor, and a great season. And the town just wanted to acknowledge you guys, the town, the house. What I'm going to do is read the first name. I know a lot of you guys are absent today. You can spell me, and then I'll give you your coach, and just wish the team a, you know, heartfelt thanks, and the town good luck. Thank you. So it's Kyle here. Good. About Brian? Good. About Evan? Good. Congratulations, number 14, Evan Carlson, New Millford River Rocks, 15, Under Babe Ruth Baseball Team, on your first place finish in the 2018 East Street Baseball End of Season Tournament. First place finish in the 2018 Babe Ruth Baseball 15 U District 4 Championship. Second place in the 2018 Connecticut Baseball 15 U State Championship. Your team represented the town with honor and pride. We're very proud. Keep up the great work, gentlemen. Georgie? Cam? Justin? Joe? Forget that. Ben? Gavin? Max? All right. Aiden? Karen? There's Coach Carl, and there's Coach Jim.
Yep.
And there's also Coach Keith.
Yep.
And lastly, for everyone, especially within the program itself, we also want to hand them a hand of Coach Greg Oden. All right, that's great. We just want to make sure that he had that. That's awesome. Amazing, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. And, and we got one more set, and this is for, and our lifeguards that were at Lend Emmy come up front. So ladies and gentlemen, I can't tell you how proud we are of these young men and women. They did remarkable things this year. Saved a lot of lives, did a lot of good things. And the town can't thank you enough. Absolutely outstanding job. So tonight, I'm going to call in an aid bell, and same thing we did with these, I'm going to read, it's the same thing, but the town just can't thank you enough. Tim? About Samantha? About Ash? Good. Oh, Peter? Yes, sir. On behalf of the town of New Millford, I hereby present this certificate of recognition to Peter Coleman for your dedication as a lifeguard at Lend Emmy Park. You rely on your training to know what to do, and your ability to recognize and act in a life-threatening situation to make a positive impact on someone's life. Keep up the great work. The town of New Millford thanks you. Matt? Good. Kendall? Good. Al? I'm getting back to school. RJ? He's still a little early, he got. Connor? About Nick?
Nope.
Oh, get there. How about Drew? Congratulations. Thank you, David Allen. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Great group of men and women.
I'm here for you.
So next we go into mayor's comments. I'll make this as brief as I can. Kind of some highlights, road updates. We continue to work on our roads infrastructure. We've started road construction on Long Mountain Road, for those that haven't been up there yet, and begun tree cutting and drainage and preliminary work on Squire Hill Road. These are the two main roads that we're working on for this year for our road construction projects, the major ones. Town Farm Road has been paved, and the roundabout on Still River Drive is proceeding and planned. We've done chip sealing, and our crack sealing program is beginning. We're beginning our band roads, which include Grapebrook, Stephanie, Sega, and other roads. The next step in the program is we're going to become very proactive in how we plan for our future road construction. First, we're going to look at how we engineer the roads, which we have been doing, in the most efficient manner as possible. As you can see on tonight's agenda, I've asked the council to approve two job descriptions, one for a design engineer and one for a town surveyor. The goal is to have staff to assist in our new road program. Currently, we spend $400,000 on road consultants. By having these positions, we can save approximately half the cost and have a dedicated staff to concentrate 100% on the town of New Millford's work. Our goal this coming year is to break around at the beginning of the spring construction season. We will be able to work on engineering and surveying roads in the winter, which will then allow us to begin our process of road construction earlier, thus doing more roads, thus helping out with our future plans. Another thing we've been working on is, Lucy had said, at public participation, is the beautification of our downtown. We continue to work on beautifying our downtown and the surrounding area. I'd like to thank the New Millford Garden Club, the volunteers, the Millford Park and Rec Youth Agency, New Millford DPW, and the business community for all their work. But we have more to do, from adding additional gardens with the support of our business community, to a community cleanup that we will be scheduling in the near future. We are also working on tying the riverfront to the downtown community. The Riverfront Committee has been busy in creating River Fest event that will be scheduled for October 13th. We are also creating walking loops within the riverfront and the downtown. We will also have historical and architectural walks as well. Those are going to provide some economic drivers, as well as health and safety benefits for our towns, taxpayers, residents, children, and people that want to come visit and play and work here in New Millford. As far as economic development goes, we're continuing our search, and we've been interviewing for an economic development director. More interviews we will have in the next few weeks, and I will apprise the council in the next town council meeting where we are with that. Good news is, we've seen an increase in interest in New Millford and investment. Some of the opportunities that are before us of, I have received an LOI, which is a letter of intent, for the town's Peagler Hill property. I'm asking town attorney Matt Grimes to review the LOI. The developer wants to put 100 units of luxury market apartments with a 20% set aside for workforce housing on the town's piece. They're also interested in the private piece as well for development. I will be bringing this forward to the next town council meeting with more information. Also, there's another piece of interest, and that is East Street School. We have had interest in the school property. I currently have one LOI, which is a letter of intent, for the property. And that is from Dakota Properties. They would like to see affordable housing put on the property. That includes abatements. We have another developer that's interested in assisting live-in, but has not provided an LOI as of yet. They're studying the property. I also met with Greg Farmer and the team from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation last week. They have grant opportunities for East Street School, including planning, renovation costs, and tax credits. We're going to be reviewing all the options and bring forth a recommendation to council at the next meeting. But we're not going to fast carry. We're not going to opine on things that we don't have an idea about. We are going to make sure that when we bring it to council, that you council have all of the information you need to make a conscientious decision. Finances. Our finance director, Greg Osipoff, is going to be giving a presentation this evening, but I wanted to mention that we have spoken to Moody's Investment Service, who rates our bonds. On October 16th, 2017, New Millford received a negative outlook on its bond rating. When I took office in December 2017, we went to work. I went to work to tackle the reduction in state revenue. How are we going to do that? How are we going to look at our job functions? How are we going to look at how we operate with reduction in state revenue? From layoffs to reorganizing our town government, which we're still in the process of doing, to looking at all our investments, protocols and procedures, we were able to navigate this passionless financial mess that the state of Connecticut gave us. And with good news, with looking at our protocols, looking at our procedures, looking at how we do business on a day-to-day basis, and how we're planning for the future, from our investments to our road construction, to our investments in our town, in our infrastructure, and how we do things, Moody's has taken the negative rating off of our bonds. I want to thank our finance department, Greg Osipoff, our employees, this town council, and this board of finance for your hard work in making this happen. As the summer ends, I would like to thank Dan Calhoun and the Park and Rec staff, the security, the lifeguards, the park rangers at Lend Emmy. We had a challenge of numerous people coming into the park without a pass, disrupting residents who did pay for their permit. Working together with the New Millford Police Department, we were able to vigilantly patrol the beach and Addis Park so that all beach and boat permit holders could enjoy the park. In the off-season, we're going to look at ways to continue to enhance our security measures for the next beach season. As for the police chief, there's been a lot of conjecture. I want to set the record straight. We're in the process of interviewing for a new police chief. I would like to thank Chief Boyne for continuing as chief, and Lieutenant Cavello, second in command, as we continue this process. I appreciate the professionalism of our department. I appreciate the professionalism of our staff, and we're going to continue to work to provide a safe environment for our kids, our town, our business, and our future. That's utmost in all of our minds. We continue to work with our board of education partners. We're looking at jointly purchasing our oil tanks. That through the council and through the wisdom of the taxpayers who approved our budget, we have the ability to do our oil tanks this year with our school. We're also in negotiations and talks with our high school, which we just had last week, concerning Hill and Plain School, the high school roof, Scaticope School, sorry, Saranoke School, and the Northville roofs. These are all we're going to be bringing to you, the town council and the board of finance, so that we can look at opportunities to fix these roads, these roofs that are going to be in need in repair. We are also looking at energy savings by jointly purchasing, as we have before, and also looking at an ESCO opportunity with the town, the board of ed, and the WPCA. All in efforts to create opportunity for savings that we can use for capital requirements. Over the summer, we've also been working with our EOC team, that's our emergency operations team. And what have we been doing? We've been looking at how we respond to crises, whether it be weather-related, or whether it be active shooter. All those things we're looking to update, and we're looking to expand upon. One of the things that we have been doing is working with our board of ed for the safety measures. We've done tabletop protocols. We're also going to be doing a live protocol in October at New Millford High School. I will be filling you in after, but this is to make sure that the public, and our residents, and our citizens, and our students know that we have a safe, wonderful, vibrant town. Lastly, I'd talk about training. I believe that continued training of our workforce is of the utmost importance, and is imperative. Earlier this year, I asked our HR department to start mandatory trainings for all employees concerning sexual harassment, cyber training, bullying. I have now instructed, and which we are complying with. I've instructed our HR department in tandem with our department heads to now create training programs specific to each department's job functions. Our goal is to provide world-class service to our residents and our business community. Continued job training is an essential part of this, and I will apprise the council as we move forward. I'd also like to thank, at the very end, as we're doing our roads, our roads committee, who continues to do the yeoman's job in helping us assess the roads, coming up with our capital plan, and how we're moving forward. And that's pretty much what I have for my mayor's comments tonight, and I just want to thank you again, council members, for giving me the time.
Pete, the 9/11 ceremony tomorrow?
Yes, sir. The 9/11 ceremony is tomorrow morning. It's at the 9/11 Memorial, which is at Patriots Way. For those that don't know what that is, it's the cross from the railroad station. And if you could get there at 8:30, that's a little earlier, but if you could get there at 8:30, that would be great. Thank you, sir. Next, appointments.
Move the reappointment for the old Boardman Bridge Committee, all the
All the terms are the same, July 12th, 2018 through January 11th, 2019. The following reappointments: Katie Francis, Robert Berghardt, Jeremy Ruhl, Joe Coranta, William Devlin, Walter Bayer, and Ron J. Suresha. The last two as alternates.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Move the appointment to Housing Partnership of Ivana Butera, term of September 10th, 2018 through November 30th of 2018.
Any discussion? And Ivana's replacing Pagas. Pagas now retired. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Appointing for the Cable Advisory Council, Gloria Arnold, who's filling a vacancy, term September 10th, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. And the appointment of Patrick Sears, also filling a vacancy, same September 10th through June 30th, 2020.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Economic Development Commission, reappointment of David Elmore, July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020. And the appointment of Michael Anastas, filling vacancy, September 10th, 2018 through November 30th, 2021.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Zoning Commission, appointment of Teresa Atkinson, filling vacancy, September 10th, 2018 through November 5th, 2019.
Any discussion? Dr. Muller?
Mayor, I sent you a name to have on tonight's agenda. I don't see it on the agenda.
The name was appointed to me from your DTC. I interviewed both candidates, and I chose Teresa Atkinson to fill the zoning slot. Reason being is trying to bring in all sorts of talent and all sorts of people's experiences. Mrs. Atkinson is a realtor in town, and I think with that exposure to the real estate market, we already have a builder, which Mr. White already is, already on the commission. So I think adding that extra level, an extra wide swath of experience would be helpful to the commission.
I'll ask you the same question I asked to have a name on the agenda. It's not on the agenda. So as a member of town council, if I make that request, why isn't it on?
Because I'm not appointing, recommending as a point. If you'd like to put a name forward, you can do that.
I don't think that's an issue. If I ask for something on the agenda, as a member of this town council, I get it on the agenda.
Mr. Grimes?
No, you know, I've applied on this subject for the very subject, and the charter's crystal clear, the appointments of the prerogative of the mayor. Somebody, council member, wants to request an item be added to the agenda, roads, etc., it's perfectly within their purview to do that, but if they forward a name to the mayor for an appointment, the mayor's not willing to appoint that person, doesn't go on the agenda. Charter's crystal clear?
The charter may be crystal clear on that, but here's the problem with that argument, is that when you sit in the minority, you don't get the person you want to forward. In this situation, we have an elected official who's stepped down. The DTC represent the Democrats in town. If you are a member of the RTC or a DTC in any town in Connecticut, you are an elected official representing those in your party. So therefore, I sit in the minority position. I represent the Democrats. I ask to have a name put on the agenda. The courtesy should be, it should be here. I don't know her background. You tell me she's a real estate agent, that's wonderful, but that's not the point. Shouldn't be done. And I'll add one other thing. If the roles were reversed, you would be arguing the same thing I'm arguing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Upste.
Thank you.
For inland wetlands commission, appointment Irene Scirballo, filling an alternate vacancy, September 10th, 2018 through November 30th, 2018.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
For the arts commission, sorry. For the arts commission, move to appoint Julie Leerson, filling a vacancy, September 10th, 2018 through November 30th, 2019.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
For the youth agency, move for the appointment of Heidi Edel. I'm sorry if I messed that up. Filling a...
Heidi Adele.
Adele, filling a vacancy. She'll work from September 10th, 2018 through November 30th, 2019.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Move to appoint for the Bike and Trail Committee Two, appointment of Lisa Aronson, Tom O'Brien, James McKeon, Linda Malarkey, William Baker, Chris DiCaro, Melvin McBriarty, Irene Melzer, Gary Hita, all for the term of September 10th, 2018 through March 11th, 2019.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven, move to accept, approve, rather, the minutes of the regular town council meeting of August 13th.
Any discussion on the minutes?
I have one. And I apologize, last time I knew, my comments ran very long. On page 10 of the packet, which is page 6 of 15 of the meeting minutes, it says the full copy of the charter of the Bike and Trail Two was attached. I couldn't find it because there were specifics in the charter in terms of deliverables, so I brought another copy, just to make sure that it got attached.
Just attach the regular ones that got...
Okay. Since I didn't see the packet, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor? Are all opposed? Thank you.
Move to close, at the request of Alpenhouse, close Bank Street on Saturday, October 6th, 2018 for Oktoberfest. The event hours are from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. However, the request includes closing Bank Street from 7:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m. for setup and breakdown.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Are opposed? Thank you.
Move to approve the request of New Milford Parks and Rec to close the southbound Main Street through traffic from the top of the Green, south to Bridge Street, Bank Street, and the two crossovers at Church Street and at Boardman Terrace on Wednesday, October 31st, 2018, between the hours of 5:15 and 7:30 p.m. to hold the Halloween trunk or treat.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Are opposed?
Move to accept the request of Leontino Heritage Land Trust to close Maryall Road, one lane, approximately .2 miles at 238 Maryall Road, on Saturday, September 15th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to hold the fall celebration. The rain date for this would be Sunday, September 16th.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Are opposed? Thank you.
Item nine, move to accept from the tax collector, September 2018 refunds in the amount of $3,280.58, which leaves a balance of $55,554.88.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Are opposed? Thank you.
Item 10, updating discussion from the Community Center Committee.
Thanks. Thanks, Chuck.
You're right for all that you get.
Yeah, I get it. Thanks. Thanks, Chuck.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Legori. I'm the chairperson of the Community Center Committee. This is Jeff Winter. He's the vice chair, and we're here to present the interim findings. This is not our final report. This is just what we've done so far. So the Community Center, we've been meeting since March. We were appointed in January. We didn't meet for the first time until March, but we were renewed for a second term on July 24th. We split into four subcommittees, which we'll get into in a minute, but we came here to present what we found so far, what our process has been, our findings, and a request for funding for an outside firm to conduct some further research. Mayor Bass had come to our meeting on June 21st. He indicated some support for that, for a further research firm, and we came here on July 9th, and also several of the town council members also stated that they thought a professional firm would be necessary. So we have a full proposal that should be included in packets that you have received, either via email or hand copy. The firm that the committee had spoken to and ultimately decided on, this is the timeline that they projected, so we're looking at a six-week process here, and we've been renewed through January 24th. So we kind of want to get moving on it quickly, because if it's going to take six weeks and we only have till January, we need to get moving on it. So our charge, which we, I think, several members of the committee are here, and I think they would agree, we've read it at almost every meeting. So our charge, we have three bullet points up there. To study the feasibility of a community center, recommend the community center's composition, operational structure, and finances, and recommend any steps needed to legally accomplish the creation of a community center. So like I said before, we studied four areas. We had four subcommittees within our committee. We studied the history of community centers in New Milford, precedent of similar Connecticut towns, whether they had a community center, did not have one, what made up their community center, what type of facility was it? The utilization committee, which studied the current and future space needs of town agencies and anyone that's expressed interest to us that they want to be in a community center. And then outreach and feedback. What they did was they collected and analyzed data from a survey that was sent out, and they also ultimately recommended the firm that we showed the timeline for. So the history of community centers in New Milford, we found out that there have been four in town, three run by the town and one privately managed. There was, run by the town, there's 29 Church Street, which was the old telephone building, the senior center, and the current John Pettibone Community Center. Private, just the Maryall Community Center, which still holds various art and music events. Three of the four currently exist. And based upon our research, New Milford is the only town in Connecticut to close a community center. So the most complete community center that we've had in this town existed back in the '60s and early '70s. That was the one in the old telephone building at 29 Church Street. Parks and Rec was the first town agency to occupy it, and there were programs offered to all ages and various experiences. So the youth programs included sports, arts and crafts, and after-school programs with a game room, and adults had classes for personal and professional development. We saw pictures of people taking typing classes. Here's the pictures. So those were from right here in New Milford, just a few decades ago.
The classes also involved things for adults, such as accounting, law, as well as other home skills, and the kids also learned not just baseball, which is what we taught there, but other school and homework affairs as well. So it wasn't educational, so.
So the community center, we wondered, why is New Milford the only town to close a community center? Well, it turns out it was the lack of will on part of the town, public entities, and volunteers, which we know in New Milford, we rely a lot on volunteers. So the town agencies moved into 29 Church Street, zoning, health department, and a few others. Parks and Rec lost a lot of space. They could no longer support most of the community center programs. The teen center remained open for a while, but eventually closed because of space, and that was the end of the community center in town. So we do have a senior center here. In some towns, the senior center is what they consider a community center. Our town serves the seniors very well, but it only provides for the seniors. So it's, you know, in some towns, it may be the community center, but here, it really, it doesn't work that way. We have a large generational gap in town that only the seniors are served at the senior center. The Maryall Community Center was founded in 1951, main focus on the performing artists, readings, speakers, education. It's run by a board of directors, and it just shows how a specialized center could be in a community. Do you want to talk about precedent?
All right. So one of our four committees was what we referred to as precedent, and the precedent was to really look at what are other towns similar to New Milford in Connecticut doing in terms of, or what do they have in terms of the community centers? And I will say, I'll note that most of this work, fortunately or unfortunately, fell on the shoulders of Nick Pooter, because, as you know, we had a lot of members that just didn't show up. So a lot of the members of Nick's committee disappeared. So what you see tonight is mostly his work, and he did an excellent job. So what Nick did is he decided to use two groups of towns for comparison. First were the eight towns that abut New Milford, and then 22 towns that are in the same educational reference group as New Milford. And, you know, if you're familiar with, you know, the Board of Ed and how it works and how we're compared to, we're compared to the towns in reference group D. We have similar demographic characteristics, population characteristics, things of that sort. And the analysis included, but was not limited to, a 20-item questionnaire that was sent out to the towns and also reviewing the various towns' websites. As Michelle discussed, and the committee knows, that there are truly multiple definitions of what a community center is, and multiple ways in order to organize how those services are provided. There is no one single way to do it. Among the towns, of the 30 towns we looked at, the community... And I will say, I'll note that most of this work, fortunately or unfortunately, fell on the shoulders of Nick Pooter, because, as you know, we had a lot of members that just didn't show up, so a lot of the members of Nick's committee disappeared, so what you see tonight is mostly his work, and he did an excellent job. So, what Nick did is he decided to use two groups of towns for comparison. First were the eight towns that abut New Milford, and then 22 towns that are in the same educational reference group as New Milford. And, you know, if you're familiar with, you know, the Board of Ed, and how it works, and how we're compared to, we're compared to the towns in Reference Group D, we have similar demographic characteristics, population characteristics, things of that sort. And the analysis included, but was not limited to, a 20-item questionnaire that was sent out to the towns, and also reviewing the various towns' websites. As Michelle discussed, and the committee knows, that there are truly multiple definitions of what a community center is, and multiple ways in order to organize how those services are provided, there is no one single way to do it. Among the towns, of the 30 towns we looked at, the community centers varied in size from 800 square feet to 50,000 square feet. Twenty towns did not have a dedicated community center. Six towns focused primarily on outdoor athletic facilities as their community center. At least three towns have community centers combined with or located in other municipal buildings, so there will be, for instance, social services might share space with a library, which might share space with Park and Rec, or what have you, so there's always that type of mixture. And four towns have the senior center as the only community center. Ten of the towns do have a centralized, dedicated community center facility. And, just to show you some examples here of what other towns have done recently in terms of investments. Wallingford renovated an office building, 50,000 square feet, it will include agencies and recreation at a cost of $2.3 million. Branford, they're renovating 33,000 square foot space for a mixed-use facility at a cost of $12.5 million. Now, Newington is unique for a few reasons, but the voters there approved $28.5 million to replace the Town Hall, and many offices within Town Hall, as well as community center. But basically, their Town Hall was falling apart, so it needed a lot of help. But what's interesting about that is that the voter's support was nearly two to one in favor. And how often do you see almost anything receive voter's support at a two to one margin? It's pretty high. Two of the towns had swimming pools, both Sheldon and North Haven, but none of the towns, none of the facilities, had an outdoor pool. So, again, it was two of the 30. And then again, example for nonprofit community centers, Brookfield, obviously, we, many of us know of the YMCA there. In our local town of Sherman, there's the Jewish Community Center. And Stonington actually has a nonprofit that runs it, and what I have listed here is just some of the things that they run. They run the beach, the sporting facilities, playground, and a few other buildings associated with it. So, again, I want you to all kind of get an idea that there really is no one-size-fits-all. So, and this really is Nick's work and his goal of this study and moving forward, is to really estimate the size and costs for New Milford based upon similar facilities in other towns. Size and cost for New Milford cannot be accurately projected until a number of factors are determined, including the programs, the departments, design, and/or renovation. So, those are the things that we have to look at further as we move down the road.
Our third subcommittee was the Utilization Committee. Their task was to look at the current space and future need requirements for the various town agencies, potential new users and tenants of a community center, and potential revenue from any nonprofit tenants. So, at the current community center at John Pettibone, the following departments or tenants: Parks and Rec, they utilize 5,043 square feet plus 2,025 square feet, in three temporary rooms, and the gymnasium and stage area, which is 4,941 square feet with an occupant load of 706. Social Services is using 4,768 square feet, which includes the food bank. The Youth Agency is using 9,282 square feet, plus 8,000 square feet at the max, and approximately 2,000 square feet of shop and storage at East Street. The max is 8,000 square feet, and that's part of the Youth Agency. CERT, our Emergency Response Team, they are using 750 square feet, and the cafeteria, which is currently shared, is 2,640 square feet. So, the total space being used is 37,499 square feet. 29,449 of that is in the John Pettibone Community Center, and 8,000 is at the max. So, in talking to the various agencies that are currently there, they are satisfied with their space, many of them have space that they never had before, that they're able to actually use. For example, Social Services is thrilled with what they have now, they used to have food in the hallway in their old space, and now they have, they were able to set it up like a shop, so people could come in and get the food that they need weekly, with some dignity. Possible new tenants coming in, very interested, we've heard a lot from Robotics and Beyond, we've heard a lot from the Culinary School, couple times, Northville Amateur Radio Association has contacted us, we've also heard from literacy volunteers, the Thrift Mart, and some other local groups like the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, who are constantly looking for space to meet. Potential revenue from any new tenants, we host only town agencies, not going to generate much rent revenue, but most of the other groups that have expressed interest in going to the community center said that they would pay rent. So, the Culinary School and the Thrift Mart, they're the two big ones that have really been, really been after us, that they want to get in there. They contribute a lot to New Milford through job training with the Culinary School, scholarships to seniors, the Thrift Mart contributes, I think, over $100,000 in scholarships a year. The Culinary School, they want the kitchen and shared access to the cafeteria, they're currently paying $1,500 a month. The Thrift Mart would love five rooms, about 3750 square feet, they're willing to pay market rate, and like I said, they donate about $100,000 to town entities. Robotics and Beyond, they need about one or two classrooms with additional space for their summer camp, they can pay about $1,000 a month. Over the past two years or so, they've moved around to various places in town, looking for a place to fit their needs, they know that they can get that at the community center. So, the total space that is still needed, about 7,200 to 8,700 square feet.
Well, the fourth subcommittee, which has probably gotten the most notice, is the Outreach Committee. As was discussed back in July, they conducted a month-long survey of New Milford residents, you know that it was distributed online, as well as hard copies, but through email lists from the Public Library, Board of Ed, Social Services, Park and Rec, the Youth Agency, and the Senior Center. And we received basically well over 1,466 responses. The key finding is that a majority of residents, roughly 80%, expressed a desire for a community center in New Milford. What's significant about this is that this data is nearly the same as the 72% desire for a community center recorded back in the 2010 Plan of Conservation and Development. This adds validity to both the 2010 study, as well as the survey done this year. And this is that key question, I think New Milford needs a community center. If you add up, we strongly agree, and agree, it's about 79.52% of all respondents think that New Milford needs a community center. The disagrees were less than 10%, and neither agree nor disagree was close to 12. But, again, this is a pretty strong response, and again, it aligns very well with what was done in 2012. As part of the response, people were given a chance to make suggestions, and they made quite a few, I believe the total was, it was 660, and I emailed all of you the report with all of the results from all of the, all eight questions, and so you can feel free to look through all 660 responses if you wish. But they really suggested a mix of services, including government agencies, recreation, and educational opportunities, as Mr. Brookbride was suggesting earlier, and many others have as well, and these should be for residents of all ages. Before we move on to next steps, what's interesting is that when you look what the people asked for, or what they sought, it drives right back to what our town had as a community center in the 60s and 70s. Educational opportunities, recreational opportunities for youth, those desires really haven't changed, it's just that our town dropped the ball. And so hopefully now, we can pick that ball back up and run with it.
So, based on all of the research and findings that we've done over the past six months, you can see a lot of work has been done, and it's been questioned what we've been doing, but we've been very busy, and we are asking for $18,500 for a professional firm to conduct workshops and an in-depth survey, as was suggested by the mayor and several council members. The research of the committee has led us to Great Blue to complete the work, I think Jeff's handing out the, is that the proposal?
Yes.
Okay. So, as we continue with our charge for the next couple of months, we're also, you know, we're continuing to seek community input, and we're taking a very serious look at the different options for a community center. Do we want something new? Do we want to use an existing building? What types of services? What's a good mix of services? Location, and of course, costs and upgrades. Questions?
Two, and they're both on utilization, I have not been able to go through the 666.
You haven't?
Part of a community center, one thing I think would be very important is adult education. Mostly adult education right now is mostly in the evening, and there are many adults that truly need things to improve their lives during the day, they work different shifts, a whole bunch of different reasons. Was that one of the requests made for adult ed, if you call it a community center?
There were some comments to that effect, that you can see in your email package, the responses, there were some people that really wanted classes for adults as a part of that house here.
I think that, I think what Mr. Brookbride brought up, technical skills, whether it be electric plumbing welding is a big demand in the country today, this is an example. And one personal thing I would love to see, it's a picture, anyone request a pool being added to a community center?
That was the top requested item, right?
Yes.
Are you pulling my leg?
No, you can look at the comments, top requested item.
Thank you. Any other questions? Katie?
Michelle, you might have told us this last time, but the survey, I mean, I remember when you brought it up, I never got one, but how many people, how many email addresses was it sent to?
So, I don't know the exact number, what I do know is when we were trying to figure out how to get it out to the widest swath of New Milford residents as possible, and as fair as way possible, there was an evening when the mayor was present at one of our committee meetings, and we said, "What are your thoughts?" And he, and we as a committee, came up with a list of town agencies that we sent a request to, can we use your email list? They said yes, so we never actually had the email list in our possession, we passed the survey on to the agencies, and they poured that out. So, whoever was on those lists from those agencies received an email.
Okay, and my second question is, were the people who received it, I don't know what system you used to handle these, were they able to answer more than once?
No, we used the survey monkey.
Really?
They checked the SDF, that's what it said.
It was only once, so these are 1,400-plus distinct responses?
Yes. And that's a pretty good representation of our community, because Great Blue is looking at 400 surveys, I think, as a representation?
Well, I just wonder what the representation is to what went out, because I think the night we first talked about this, there were several of us here, council members, who never received one, so I just, you know, I'm not on their mailing list perhaps, however you did it, I don't know, not saying it's not a good segment, but...
Just so you know, we did some checking on that, and first of all, again, it's important to remember that a survey is a survey, a survey's not a census, okay?
I understand survey, it's pretty much, Jeff.
And it's not a focus group, so it's meant to be somewhat wide, but, so we wanted to see why some people did not, on the town council, did not receive them, and Social Services did not have, if you want, I can name names, but...
No, no, I just wonder, for instance, we have emails within the town, the people who work on, volunteer on all the boards and commissions, the people who work for the town, those are, we get them all the time, you know about those, I just wonder why...
Well, I know that some of you are on the library board, but you were not on the library board's email list.
I'm not on the library board. Those are commissions, there's volunteer commissions, I just was curious.
We had this argument last time, it's water under the bridge, I'm not sure why.
No, but it does lend, it lends some, I'm not going to say good, bad, or indifferent, it just gives me some information on 1,466 survey replies, which you say are distinct, just gives me something to think about as to, out of our 20, how many households we have, 27,000 people, where this came from. You know, when you do a survey, a demographic is also part of the information you want to take in to consideration, so it's sort of spread around, but the people that are volunteers and work for the town might not have been included in it, that's all. It's over, and you're looking for another one, but I just wanted to make sure I understood, because as Peter Mullen didn't have time today, I kind of did a little bit of looking through these many pages, Peter, it's quite interesting, you'll see your pool on here, and Private Party Place.
I may start reading then.
Private Party Place was my favorite, but I was just surprised, you say they were all individual responses, some of them are eerily similar typeos included, just curious.
Can I speak to that?
Sure, ask him, he's the boss.
To name for the record?
Greg Bowman, I'm on the Community Center Committee. I did some of the research with regards to some of the companies that we looked at. Anyway, I did a test on a, my personal test on the online survey, and I was able to take it eight times myself.
You can take it, but the Survey Monkey tool is designed to only accept one response.
Not the case. And also, the survey company said that, the comps, I'm sorry, it makes it a little long, the survey company said that they couldn't regulate the content, they couldn't guarantee that it was an individual for the very purposes that I just described, that one person could take it or not, so they said they can't do that. They did, however, say that statistically, it didn't matter, when they prepared the numbers for online versus phone calls, statistically, it came out to be about the same.
Were phone calls made in this? Oh, okay, you're talking, generalized survey, okay. Okay, thanks for the answer.
I have some, I have a idea, Del. We did have one survey at the beginning, and then we had heard that some people hadn't received it, so the second set of results were from round two, where we had tried to distribute it to the people who requested it. It didn't make a big difference, maybe there was a difference of 40, I'd have to look at the exact number, but that is exactly, because of those results and your concerns, is why we took the measures to look into Great Blue, and Greg Mullen did a lot of work for that, so Great Blue will hopefully assuage your concerns about the validity of the survey.
Just so you're aware, Heidi and Julie are members of the Outreach Subcommittee, and Greg's a member of the Utilization Committee, and then they combined together to come up with how we, how they picked Great Blue to conduct the next step in the process.
I think we're only on committee members, you're on the committee? I mean, it's not open forum, correct?
No.
They're on the committee.
So, I'm just going back to the charge, which is one of your first slides.
Okay, thanks for the answer. Can I just?
I have some, I have my idea now. We did have one survey at the beginning and then we had heard that some people hadn't received it, so the second set of results were from round two, where we had tried to distribute it to the people who requested it. It didn't make a big difference, maybe there was a difference of forty, I'd have to look at the exact number. But that is exactly, because of those results and your concerns, is why we took the measures to look into Great Blue and Gray Mullen did a lot of work for that. So Great Blue will hopefully assuage your concerns about the validity of the survey.
Just so you're aware, Heidi and Julie are members of the outreach subcommittee and Greg's a member of the utilization committee. And then they combined together to come up with how we, how they picked Great Blue to conduct the next, the next step in the process.
I think we're only on committee members, you're on the committee? I mean, it's not open forum, correct?
No.
They're on the committee.
So I'm just going back to the charge, which is one of your first slides. So it said, study the feasibility of a community center. I think you guys have done that so far. I know this is just an interim report and you guys aren't complete. I did not see anything regarding the recommendations of the committee as it pertained to what they believe the composition of the community center should be, except in really general terms. Is that correct?
I'd say that's practice, an interim report, I mean.
Yeah, so you guys are going to come back to us then in a couple of months saying, based on the consensus of this committee, we believe this is what the composition should be?
Right.
Okay.
Well, but that's, that's all part of the survey process too. It's like, it's not just what the committee thinks, it's, okay, with this feedback from the community, because they may have different ideas than, than what we do, because I might want, you know, fifteen ping pong tables and the rest of the community would rather have fifteen pool tables, so.
But just like.
And I'm just throwing that out as an example.
Yeah, I mean, but Jeff, I mean, just like we were voted on the town council to represent the taxpayers.
Right.
I mean, did we not appoint the twenty-five people which have been whittled down to seventeen or eighteen?
Absolutely.
To represent the interest of the taxpayers as well?
Oh, no, but I'm just saying that, yes, we want to, we want to be able to take their thoughts into consideration and then we will, you know, make those decisions. We just haven't had enough information yet.
How about operational structure? Like how many people would be needed to run a community center and what those costs would be?
I think it all goes hand in hand. It's, I mean, again, it's an interim report. We're, we've done a lot of work.
I know, but we're suggesting tonight, right, you guys are requesting money.
Right.
For a study, but we don't have the basic information yet to know, you know, what would be in the community center. You're saying you, you don't want to do the work, you want us to hire someone and then they're going to come up with it, or?
No, I mean, most of the community centers are generally run through Park and Rec. And then again, that's looking at the, at the thirty other towns that have them. Now, that doesn't mean that's the sole and only way to do that, that just happens to be the model that many towns follow with. But again, it depends on that composition. If Park and Rec is not part of a community center, then obviously they're not going to be the leadership factor in that. So, and again, like for instance, with the senior center being the community center or part of the community center in most communities, it generally is going to flow through the community center as to, for instance, how, how, you know, space is used, who's going to ensure that, you know, public space is given to different groups, things of that sort. So, you know, it's the composition that's going to drive that.
So you had referred earlier to the Pettibone Building as it related to the existing spaces utilized within that and gave detailed square footages on that, but not things like the senior center or the library, for instance? So is the committee's direction that you're heading, is that that building's utilized? Or, because then you were looking about the additional square footage needs, or?
So, that's, it's not our charge to determine where it goes. We'll come back with a recommendation as to what we think, but that's not part of our job to decide where it goes. So we're just talking about what's in our current community center, how much space are they using, and do they think that they need any more space? Who else wants to get in and how much space do they need? We're not going to look at the library because that's not going anywhere. We're not going to look at the senior center because they just got a grant. They put on an expansion, they're not going anywhere either. They're locked in for at least five years. So we're, I'm not looking at the senior center, I'm looking at what, what do we have now?
But, but when you look at the survey you did of thirty towns, out of those ten, ten towns that had some sort of a community center function, the primary majority of those utilized their library and senior center as their community center. So are we saying we're going to ignore what the majority of the other towns do and, and our, our community center doesn't consist of that? I'm confused.
Well, our community center, I don't think it can. I mean.
Are you planning on buying up the property between the library and the senior center?
No, I mean, I'm just going to, your guys' research, right? You're saying our community center closed in nineteen seventy-nine or whatever it was. It didn't close, it relocated, right? You had Maryall Center for the Arts, which does not perform.
That was founded in nineteen fifty-one as, as still a private.
So it was a pri, our community center was private, not run by the town?
No, Maryall is private.
Correct, but, but that serves certain functions of what our community center previously did. You said we had an orchestra and, no. So, so it says located at twenty-nine Church Street. Parks and Rec was the first agency to occupy the community center. Still have a Parks and Rec, right?
Yes.
Okay. Then it says programs offered to all ages and provided various experiences, youth programs including sports. We do have Parks and Rec and youth agency which serves that purpose, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, but they were not all together at the same time.
So what you're saying is because they're not in one location, it doesn't count?
Up until about two years ago, Parks and Rec was down on Bridge Street and the youth agency was in East Street. They were not together, they were not in a community center. Now they are.
Okay, so I guess my question is, are the functions of the community center in nineteen seventy-nine still performed today by various town agencies? Well, I'm not, let me just keep going because I'm just going through your slides, because you say arts and crafts. I mean, doesn't the youth agency have that with our youth and doesn't the rec portion of our Parks and Rec do that through their classes?
Yes, in the community center.
Do you want to say all of the functions? I don't see us hosting any law classes. I don't see us hosting any typing classes, I don't see us hosting any computer classes and things of that sort. Now again, the Board of Ed, but again, these are the things that are.
Oh, the senior center does. They offer those, they offer typing, they offer the computer classes, the library also offers those classes.
What is the thirty-five year old?
That's all education.
They go to the library, the library offers the similar courses, Jeff. And then if you look at the Board of Ed, they have an adult ed program that offers many of the same courses as well?
That's Board of Ed, that's not the community center.
But if the town.
Yeah, but hold on, so I'm, sorry to interrupt, but I think this is an interesting point. And again, I understand it's interim report and thank you for your work. One of the things going forward, when you come up with the final compilation, is will there be cannibalization from other entities and programs? And you have to offset that with then what the final square footage needs and the overall program needs are. So just tuck that away for consideration for the final report.
So you're essentially referring to like synergies between departments?
You can call them synergies or cannibalization, which means that there's only so much in the population and if you offer the same, I think we've run into this in some departments. If two departments are offering the same program, there's only so many people are going to sign up and then we end up with extra cost and non-sustainability. So just think about that.
And then the popular after-school programs, including the game room. I mean, we do have the Max down on Railroad Street that has the game room, right?
They do. I don't think the Max is just open as a free-for-all every day after school though.
So you're different, so maybe we should open that more hours, you're saying? Or you're saying we should construct another facility that provides the same thing, but have that open more hours?
I think that's part of what the survey is going to look at.
And then we were just, you were discussing, so you're not looking at the library and what the new proposed library is offering from a meeting room perspective? Because I saw one of the, one of the shared community centers, basically its primary use was for meeting rooms, I forget what town it was, and then Kent as well. So you're saying as part of, part of your charge, you're not going to look at what the new library is going to potentially offer and what needs they could serve from a meeting space perspective?
I don't know what the library is going to offer. They haven't offered it yet.
But we have full design plans, right?
I just wanted to speak to the proposal by Great Blue. Please take your time to look through that because I think that will answer some of your concerns. In fact, on page six, one of their big, one of the charges is for them to do the survey of all residents in terms of their overall satisfaction, of their perception of the current facilities, of all those things, and communicate with all the residents and then to figure out what the cost is that the residents are willing to pay. And that is part of our chart we started, especially Gray Holmes Committee, looking at the price of each building, so that's the next item on our agenda is, is the cost.
So, so for that eighteen thousand five hundred or what it is, they're only going to contact about four hundred of the thirty thousand residents, is that what?
Greg has this more memorized than I do.
Okay.
Yeah, that was recommended for community purposes.
That's fifty bucks a touch, that's reasonable.
It's for the validity.
And we'll get another, hopefully fifteen hundred, plenty of luck pushing out the need app last, the social media app last, to get more information to validate the fact as well.
So then in the precedent section that you provided to us, so there's thirty, thirty towns you guys looked at, about ten of them have some sort of a community center. Of those ten, three are run by nonprofits, right? Sherman is JCCC, Brookfield is YMCA.
Brookfield also, I believe, has their own facility as well, but we were just using the YMCA just as an example, you know, a private, privately run community center, so.
So out of the thirty, I looked at this spreadsheet that you guys presented to us tonight, so only three of the thirty have a dedicated community center, based on what you provided.
It was like ten, it was like ten.
Could you show me? Because I'm not following that. I saw Rocky Hill and Shelton as dedicated.
I'm sorry, Paul, what's the question?
Is which?
Dedicated.
Based on the spreadsheet, I only, actually I saw two dedicated community centers, so I'm just trying to better understand.
And the difference is when the shared, it's shared with other town entities?
Yeah, so it might be like Board of Ed or the municipal town hall is part of it, or municipal agencies.
Well, you have, starting with Berlin is shared with library, Parks and Rec. Bethel has a municipal center and a senior center that is shared. Branford has a shared center with Park and Rec and seniors.
I think we're trying, I think we're trying to key in on the ten dedicated that you referenced in the PowerPoint.
Rocky Hill and Shelton.
Just because it's shared, doesn't mean it's not dedicated.
Well, then that's.
East Line.
So then which is it? I'm just trying to follow the data.
Yeah, not following the spreadsheet.
Because all I see is out of thirty towns, two that are dedicated.
In Milford, you have multiple converted schools. And if you, if you actually take a look at it, what many of them are and how they also combine with Boys and Girls Club, they're actually on the same plot of land. So even though there might be a few buildings on it, it's all within like the same plot of land.
Yeah, you missed East Lime, that's the library, is there a community center?
Sorry?
You missed East Lime, where the library is their community center?
Yep. You know, Eaton, again, we talked, we talked about how they are having a, a complete revamp, where they're building their community center as part of the revamp with the town hall, et cetera.
And the Board of Ed, right?
Town, I mean, yeah, you name it, it's going to be in there. I mean, the town clerk will be in there, or any town hall function. Board of Ed, I think, was, if I remember from the article, Board of Ed gets like the third floor dedicated to their needs, and then there's like community center with multiple athletic facilities and things of that sort there. North Haven, again, they, they're the ones, they're one of the two that had the swimming Old Saybrook, they're one of the communities that's focused mostly on recreation. Rocky Hill had a dedicated facility. Shelton, a dedicated facility. Southernton, no dedicated facility, senior center only. Starington, I think we discussed that, was the one where it's a private group that runs their, their beach and outdoor facilities. Wallingport has a dedicated facility. And Windsor is a shared facility with the Recreation Department, BOE and seniors.
Can you say your name?
One of the issues that you have to acknowledge in town is that after the demise, if you will, of the original senior center facility some years back, units grew. And as Michelle indicated, we have Parks and Rec at the former post office, which is now the Bay Court Building. We had the youth center up, the, what is it, well, they were on East Street, I think, at the top. They didn't even have enough room. And we had different groups and services, social services as well, in the senior center. We had a hodgepodge. As it grew, people located those resources in available space. So it never got to be a coordinated effort to put everything together. What we're looking at, and we're not making any recommendations at this point, is just taking the information, the opportunities that we have to make the best use of the resources to serve all ages of the community. If we combine municipal with recreational and educational and social service activities, whatever, if we can keep these in a reasonably concentrated area, that would be a benefit. One of the other things that we face is, and this is important, people can't, people ask about what's going on in our community center. We have no signage to speak of. There's really no promotion by the town to go to our community center unless you've got youngsters in school and you see, you know, you follow the programs for school activities, after-school activities. They even have pickleball for seniors, that's fun, but anyway. The point being is, it gives us an opportunity with this survey to find out what the interests are and goals of the community at large, all age groups, income groups. And by doing that, we have to find out how we can best put them together at the least cost but most effective use. And the survey will guide us. But you can't expect, Paul, that, well, what do you do this? What does this town do? What does that town do? They're not in Milford. We grew up differently. We had buildings available, we used systematically.
Can we get back to the questions from the council, please?
So then just to confirm, the thirty towns that you guys looked at, only three have a dedicated community center, so ten percent?
No, that's, no, ten.
Okay, well then.
According to this, it is.
I named for you.
The three that are dedicated.
No, I named for you multiple ones that have a shared community center.
Well, we.
I asked dedicated.
Dedicated is what that is.
Because that's what you guys were speaking to the whole night, is that you're saying it all has to be in one facility.
Right, well, if it's shared.
But out of the.
If it's shared by, by, for instance, library, Park and Rec, that is their definition of community center and therefore it is a dedicated facility.
Is Nick here? Is Nick not here tonight? He answered his question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Nick some questions with muscle, because I guess that's.
Nick's definition.
Yeah. I feel for how we had Nick.
Thing is.
Maybe we'll have him come in so we can explain it.
Nick knows this as well as anyone, so.
Each town defines a community center differently. So, you know, some of them define a library as a community center, some of them define a senior center as a community center. So it's not going to be a one size fits all across the board.
So then based on that spreadsheet, I was looking at the services that those towns provide and then I looked at some of those towns today briefly after we got it. It looks like New Milford provides almost the largest amount of services out of any of the towns that you guys surveyed. I guess your concern is just that the services aren't centralized together?
That's part of it, but also, like Lisa mentioned, the synergy between the different agencies and groups that are there. I mean, they just, they never had that before.
Excuse me, clarification, I did not mention synergies. I said be careful in your analysis to think about cannibalization of programs and don't double count them. Sorry, let's be clear about what I said.
I use synergy.
Okay. The towns, the agencies are meshing, I guess, is the best way to say it.
And then, how many of those thirty community centers rented space to nonprofits?
I don't know that we have that information, although actually, Nick might have some, Nick might have some of that, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Anyone else from the committee?
Well, you know, I will say again, for instance, Milford, by combining with the Boys and Girls Club, that is a, that is a joint, you know, that is a joint effort. Whether there's rent pay or not, that I don't know.
Greg, you had your answer?
Yeah, so the work that the space utilization committee did also did a little bit of precedent work, a few, a few that you shared with Nick, a few were our own. None of them had shared nonprofits in their community center.
No, 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 none of the thirty.
There was one example in Wilton, where they were there before they did an renovation, but the bulk of the towns, Parks and Rec directors that I talked to said that the reason that they're not there is because they're not generally willing to pay the overhead.
So then are the nonprofits? So then, of the nonprofits, the potential users that you have, Robotics and Beyond, I think they currently use the Makery space, right? So we're suggesting, the committee's suggestion is to take business away from Mr. Vendgrove.
That is their suggestion. That is not ours.
Robotics has approached us on multiple occasions. They were in Thirty Bird Street, I know that, they were down the hall from me. I work in Thirty Bird Street. They were there, they left, they went through the Makery, and now they are looking for other space.
I think the Makery's given the space as a favor.
Yeah, exactly.
Do the literacy volunteers on the green pay for their space?
I don't know if they do.
They pay a small fee, same at the colonial school.
Colonial school pays where they are, right?
Well, literacy is in same place, they're, they're the church also.
Riffmarc pays where they are, right?
Yes, they do.
So the suggestion then, of the committee, is that these people who are currently paying rent to landlords who pay taxes in town, that we welcome them with open arms to come locate to our potential community center?
I said that they've approached us about.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Being in the community center.
Well, both.
We're not suggesting any of this. We're not making recommendations.
No, no, I'm just saying, as a committee, do you think that's a good practice for the town in New Milford?
I'm not going to speak for the other fifteen, sixteen.
Can I speak, because I'm one of the other?
Yes.
Please.
The, both literacy and the colonial school are bursting at the seams at the locations they're at, and they need to move, whether it's in the Pettibone or private entity in town. They, they need to get out because their services have grown to the point where they need to move on.
So if you do.
And they approach, they approach the town because there's facilities there that would make sense to them. You know, part of the, part of what we were doing when we did the nonprofit, you know, helping out the nonprofits was do the service to the town. And some of the reasons these nonprofits are looking to town for help at, you know, and yes, it might be a little below market, is because they are doing a service to the town. Robotics Beyond, Beyond does teach manufacturing, other vocational skills. The colonial school does teach, you know, does do job training, get people moving on their way. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things that we've talked about with the nonprofits, is if you have the service you're helping the town at, then it's something we might want to work with. And this isn't asking for a hand, it's just asking for a reduced rent in a facility that's already existing.
We don't know if there's a facility right now.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, while it's there, it's being used for municipal buildings, it's heating and air conditioning, so it's.
But we don't know those costs, right? I mean, that's what they told us.
I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify.
But we're agreeing to rents, we don't even know what it costs to run.
And as I said, the market.
Paul, are you?
Uh.
Yeah.
That's fine. Mike?
Yeah, why can't we rent a community center to profit businesses? Why does it have to be limited to nonprofits? I don't know why we continue to support these nonprofits, and why can't we give the same idea to for-profit? And I suggest that we move on if there's.
I just have, I have another question when you're done, Michael, so we've got to wait a little bit.
Okay.
I just want to say this, I know that there's, and I said this before, there's, there's an elephant here that all of us try to ignore, is that if Pettibone was still a school, if it hadn't been decommissioned as a school, all of these comments, all of these nonprofits, all of these things we're talking about, if they're bursting at the seams, they would have at some point had to find another alternative. And I find a bit of an issue with the fact that even, Michelle, I know you, you're just doing the numbers and you're trying not to take a point of view or side, but it's impossible when we talk about a building that was a school, that because someone called it a community center, when I grew up and the community center was across the street, it had nothing to do with any municipal business. The fact that Mr. Fletcher was there, if he was part of Parks and Rec, who knew? We were kids. And one of the reasons, I'll tell you that I think it stopped being community centers, because kids found other things to do. I mean, that's a cyclical thing. We do, now, kids are doing different things than they were ten years ago. The bottom line is, if you really want to be objective about this, I think you should stop thinking about it in terms of what we all think of it, oh, because they're together now. Paul makes a wonderful point. New Milford has fantastic programs, particularly for kids. Our youth agency does a wonderful job, so does Parks and Rec, all, all months of the year, along with the Pratt Center and Village Center of the Arts and all these others. So if we're doing such a good job, why does it have to all be combined? Because we have this building? That's really the cart before the horse. That's just not, not linear thinking. Is just because you have an empty space, does that mean you have to put things together? And that's where I see the fallacy or the problem in all of this. There's nothing wrong with your data or whatever, however you want to manipulate it, but I, I just say, can't we just forget for a minute that that building is there and approach what you're doing as if there was nothing? You gave us all the dimensions of that building. And Paul's right, there's other places. There are empty buildings around town, maybe the town doesn't own them, but perhaps they would be a more fiscally attractive way to do this. A Butler building can be, walls can be put up to be anything. Right now, we've got four people in so many square thousands of feet, that it's not practical to heat and to cool and to have a room for a couple of us to sit in. I think we all know that. And as long as you use a building like that, that's got to have a lot of work done, I still say, we're missing a little bit of this by not thinking outside the Pettibone building box. And everybody calls it a community center, but it isn't a community center. It's an organizational facilities, whatever you want, it's a town agency building, that somebody plays basketball in every once in a while. We don't use the majority of it. So I think if you really want to have a conversation about this, we spent a lot of time, you've all spent a lot of time and a lot of work, which is much appreciated, but it all comes back to every, everything you work on comes back to that building. If there, if there were still kids in it, what would these people be doing now? The food bank would have found someplace to go. Robotics and Beyond would have found someplace to go. You know, market determines a lot of times what happens. So I just wish we could just stop constantly going back to that and think of it in terms of really being objective. You know, what other alternatives are? I already see in the great blue here, or whatever, they're already thinking in terms of that. So I, I think it's all too biased to be anything other than, if it can't fit in everything in one building, we don't want it. And that's all I guess.
Can I add, please, about some of those concerns?
No, this is not, I'm sorry, Julie, but it's just, we are council and we really shouldn't be taking a lot of time going back and forth with this. I just really feel that it just goes on and on about that building, and as a councilperson, I get to say it, I appreciate, I know you worked hard on it, but it's up to the mayor. If he wants to allow it, that's fine.
Lisa?
So, thank, again, thank you for your work, and it's very contentious, and I can't imagine how exhausting it is to have a contention at every single meeting, but as I listen to the conversation, yeah, I want to go up about five thousand levels. I think the question we need to answer for all of ourselves is, how do we put this on a referendum, just like the library question, which is coming a couple agenda items later, which is, if we put it on a referendum, would you support a community center at X cost and potentially an X location? So to get to there, I think, I love the idea, and you know, I've been a big champion of this, so, sorry, Michelle, did you have a question? Did you have a question?
Sorry, she was, she was answering.
I was, yeah.
Just ask me. If I'm not making sense.
No, 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 I was saying, I said, that's our goal, is to come back with our final report with some recommendations and options for a referendum.
Okay, so along those lines, I think one of the things we need to add, to Katie's point, is centralized versus decentralized. That has not been your charge, centralized or decentralized. You've looked at other building options, so I want you to think about that as part of your charge.
That's our last bullet point, right there?
It doesn't say centralized versus decentralized. That's a very specific thing, because that then gets around the bias of the current building versus other buildings.
So it talks about new versus existing and mix of services? That's your.
So, so again, that's, if you said that to a market research firm without the history, they may not understand that that's the contention, so I want to be very literal about that with them. The other point I want to make is, if you ask any customer in any service or hard manufactured product industry what they want in a new product, they'll say, lower price, better quality. When you ask people if they want a community center, they're going to say yes until they know the price tag. So what I'd like to see in a market research firm, and again, I know I'm kind of waving the banner by myself here, is a, is a very specific type of research called conjoint analysis, where you mix the features and benefits and price points in such a way that you can't lead your market survey recipients to any one conclusion. So, just food for thought. I don't know if that is something that Great Blue does or not, but I'd like to throw that out there.
So, I guess one of the questions is, is, did any of the subcommittees look at using other buildings or other properties, or was it strictly just that building?
We didn't specifically, and we said this before, and we'll say it again, we specifically knocked down the top of any one building at every single.
That's not, that's why I said we read that charge at almost every meeting, because, and sometimes more than once every meeting, because it always comes up. And we say, our, our charge is not to find out where it is.
But I know, I guess I'm confused, because we have a lot of data right now on two underutilized buildings, right? John Pettibone and Richmond Center. So we could look at, what are our utilities for those buildings? What are our capital needs for those buildings? What are our operational costs from an employee standpoint right now at each of those buildings? What services could be put in each of those buildings? And what would that then cost us to run as each of those buildings as a community center? I mean, at least then we have a starting point to look at, as opposed to say, we're going to hire some firm who has no background. I mean, you guys have years and years of budget data that you can go through. I mean, you have, for Richmond Center, the Board of Ed did a bunch of work, for Pettibone, Mayor Gronback did a bunch of work, Green Cap came to us. I mean, if you don't have those reports, we can give you those reports. It gives a ton of data and information.
But I think what you're talking about, Lisa and Katie, correct me if I'm wrong here, is you're asking us to look at facilities before we have essentially asked the community and taken the temperature and everything else to determine what the needs are.
I want you to say, if we have a 10,000-square-foot facility, how much does it cost? How many employees are going to be needed to run a 30,000-square?
We're going to look at, what's, what's the difference between newly existing? What's the mix of services?
Okay, so you're going to, you're going to come back to us with, if we have a 10,000-square-foot, 30,000-square-foot, 50,000, 70,000, this is what it's going to take from, as part of the original charge, right? What's the composition of those various square footages? What's the organizational structure of those various square footages? And what are the associated costs associated with? I mean, that was the charge, right? That was the main charge.
So I heard you say, yeah, you're going to do that next time, yeah?
That's, that's our, well, yeah, we now, I mean, the thing is, we gathered the information on what this, what this community has had. We've gathered information on what other communities in Connecticut have had. We've gathered information on, you know, the feedback from the community. And then we've also looked at how our agencies currently utilize certain space. So for us to have moved forward looking at costs and space needs and anything like that without collecting that data, we would have been just like lost in a forest.
Okay.
So we've done our homework, and frankly, remember, we had a small budget.
As do we, just like the towns.
Just like the council.
Well, I don't know, I got happy for you today, for free, as opposed to $75 I spent at Staples last week, so. But thank you.
Anybody have anything else? Anything to address?
Yeah, just to address your comments, our space utilization subsidy, video, use of space, operations, operational cost of buildings, two buildings that we utilize as community centers, some other precedent work, capital requirements of various buildings, some options we could look at.
So is that in here? Because I'm not seeing that.
Other towns, not saying that. In other towns? Or here?
For, 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 pardon, for here.
Oh, we didn't get anything like that.
So just like we got Nick's spreadsheet, if there's any other detailed data that goes behind the interim report, I would really appreciate having a copy of that.
You got, you got everything that the committee board on and approved to be, to be moved forward.
Can we get a copy of each of the subcommittee reports?
Yes, well, actually, you'll see that in this document right here, this has all of the full subcommittee report.
Not what Greg just said. That's not in there.
But there's nothing about, there's no figured financial info.
Well, actually, his, the work that they, that they did, what we, what we approved to be in here is in here.
So can we get the draft from each sub, so hold on, I'm confused. So you guys, you guys didn't use some of the work that was done by the volunteers?
Because that, the full subcommittee didn't approve the report.
Okay, so what, what are you talking about? Because I'm not following. What do you mean, the full subcommittee didn't approve the report? What are you saying? I'm not following. Explain, please.
There were members who were not consulted on the report, and.
Okay, so how many people were on the subcommittee? The one you're talking about?
Well, I guess you have to go back and see how many were on, we have group of 25 versus the other group of 12.
Well, let's talk about today, because today you guys had a team, so.
So how many were on this subcommittee and how many approved it to go forward?
Five and four.
What do you mean, five and four?
Five on committee, four approved.
So that's a majority?
Supermajority.
I'm confused at why it doesn't matter, it's just facts, why it matters, why anything should be approved. It's facts and data, we should have it.
The more information we have, the better.
I don't understand, I mean, unless people are creating reports that are trying to get to a specific end game.
This is the information I alluded to earlier, that Greg had prepared and that we're going to start working with in, in the next meetings. And we have the information, it's part of the minutes of our subcommittee, we all talked about it at the last meeting last Thursday. This is not secret information, it's based on all the documents that you have furnished in terms of the cost of everything. It's just that the rest of the committee didn't have time to vet that, and we didn't feel comfortable making recommendations because that was on our charge.
But all the other subcommittee information was vetted and forwarded, or no?
Here's your, here's our full.
The other subcommittee information was vetted, talked about, shared, it was, we just didn't go through each line item to, to vet that information, but it's, it'll be in your.
So can we get, just, can we get the raw copy of whatever was not presented to us? Do we have that to compare, please? Okay. So Pete, can you scan that in?
Yep. Eric, did you have something you wanted to say to the committee? Sir, again? Did you have something, did you want to say to the committee? Did you have, Julie, did you have something?
Right, so the purpose of this first initial survey, right, I'm not a professional pollster, we, we were asking ourselves in the meetings, what does a community center mean, right? Is, is a library enough of a community center? Is that what we want, you know? And so part of that initial survey was to find out, what do residents in New Milford think community center means? So that when we go to the next phase, we have some input to give someone else who can come back with us with more options. There was also that other entirely different committee that was, that was looking at building use throughout the entire town. I think that's excellent information that we're going to forward to the consultant if we get the approval, to be, you know, here's, here's property and land that we currently have. We have three agencies that are currently housed in this building. We have these other agencies and other project ideas that people want to have, you know, what are some ways we can kind of move those pieces around, given the spaces that we have, for maximum impact at minimum cost? That kind of puzzle work was a bit beyond my personal capabilities to come up with within the time allotted to our committee. And so that's why we're asking for this outside input, so that we can create a fuller set of options to townspeople, to say, you know, do we want, you know, some of the projects that were listed in, in the neighboring towns? Do we want to have, you know, a nice, a huge big complex with the town hall and all of these agencies, and Parks and Rec, and blah, 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 that will be, you know, $24 million? Do we, you know, want to have?
Yes.
Parks and Rec in this one building, and youth agency in this other building that's over here, and, you know, anywhere in between? We needed to take the temperature of the town people first to see what they felt they wanted to have in a thing called a community center. And the answer could have been, we don't need anything, we're all set, thank you very much. And if that, you know, if our results for that initial survey has been skewed that way, I think we'd be giving a very good presentation tonight. But that was our thinking in, in why we framed the questions the way we did, and why we're asking for what we're going forward. If you take care to notice in the survey questions, never once did we mention a specific building. We tried very, very hard to not put, it's this building, it's that building, it's no building, it's a new building, in people's minds. And we had several iterations of questions that we went through and rejected because we felt that we were leaving and we did not want that. So going forward, I think, you know, I was inspired by some of the workshops that have been happening at, that have been held last year with housing in terms of what to, you know, what to do with the New Milford's housing stock and what kind of housing stock we wanted to have and what sorts of things. And Great Blue is one of, I think, four or five consulting agencies that we researched and they were willing to provide that kind of workshop, public response in the moment kind of project to figure out, you know, what, what if we had a community center and it looked like this? Well, how much space would that need and how much would it cost, you know? We understand that it involves very scruple.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
We're beating the horse so badly right now, it's beginning to bleed. What does the council want from this group? Eighteen-five or some kind of proposal? You need to do more work and come back.
Well said.
Thank you, Walter.
I suggest we read this data and maybe put it on the next agenda with.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
There's no call.
The horse, the horse is in trouble here.
Walter, there's no call for any action on this item. It's simply an update and discussion, so that's why we have a...
Well, but he tell you, the, the horse is on three legs right now.
They were asking, they were asking.
So is it the will the council put on the next council agenda review?
Or two.
Well, how much, how, let me ask them, how much time do you need? It's two weeks, you know, from now to the next meeting, would you rather?
No, I'm saying for us to discuss.
Well, I'm also asking them, because they have...
It'd be nice to have Nick here so we could ask him questions.
Well, that's true, but maybe they want...
Is that good, is that good? Okay.
Two weeks is fine. I would just like to remind the council that we were asked to come here with this, with a proposal and with a figure. So that's what we did, I'm fine. If you wanna, if you wanna look at it for two weeks, that's fine, but the clock is ticking like we showed you before. They're gonna take about six weeks to do this and we're only, we're only on till January as of right now.
Okay, yeah, we can extend.
But we don't want Pete extending that, this is something that I would have done.
Yeah, we don't either.
So we'll put it on the...
If they're fine with it, if the council's fine with it.
So we'll put it on the next agenda.
Hey, over two, he is good now.
Dr. Mullin?
I just wanna clarify one thing at the end there. Ms. Mullin, were you turning in a report from the subcommittee or from the whole committee? Shouldn't that go through the whole committee first?
It did, that was given to them and they based their presentation.
So the whole committee approved that?
I asked for the raw data, doctor, I didn't, I don't care.
I thought subcommittee reports went to the whole committee, they approved it and sent it on. Because basically, your subcommittee is sending this to the council before the rest of the other part of your committee sees it, right?
No, they saw it, decided to not put a lot of the data into their report or their presentation.
Why?
Why?
I don't know, good question.
Was it used in your presentation, I mean, in the background? You didn't use any of this data?
Oh, we used, we used, everything on utilization that you guys have was, was the charge of that committee.
Mr. Samansky asked for very specific data, I don't want him to be understood.
If you wanna be sure, I guess if he wants to share it, Dr. Mullin, correct me if I'm wrong, but they can do that offline as opposed to handing out copies.
It's public record, Jeff, you discussed it at your meeting. You're the FOI guru, you know that better than anyone. If it was submitted at your meeting, it's part of your record. I'd like a copy of it. Thank you.
Are we done? I'd like to amend the rules to move item 16, executive session upward. The next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, do you have that?
I'm sorry, Peter.
Let everybody else read.
Cause we pay Randy by the hour. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'm not in favor of that. I'm a pro for that. The library's been sitting here, you know, there's, there's stuff on here instead of moving.
We have a vote.
I mean, discussion portion.
There's a majority, that is, that is a topic.
So we're going to...
We have two, no.
Two no, the rest aye.
That would be very quick.
We got him, Mr. Ray, rock and roll.
Wake up. So we're going into executive session?
And we'd like to invite Attorney DeBella, Attorney Grimes to join us.
Who needs to leave, going to executive session?
And Mike Zar, oh, John, and Attorney Tower. We're back in regular, we're back to regular session. There were no, during executive session, there were no votes, no motions made, no votes taken. Once Attorney DeBella leaves the room, we'll continue. Okay, we're back in regular session. Is everybody ready for this? Okay, we're back in regular sessions. In executive session, we had no motions made, no votes were taken. I have to, we're gonna move to amend the rules. To amend the agenda, excuse me. To add the following, the motion. We have to move to authorize to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Any discussion to add to the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
And...
A motion to approve?
Yep, make a motion to approve.
That's, okay, can I have a mo, a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Now, we're going to amend the agenda to move item 13 up.
Second.
Any discussion on changing the agenda and hearing 13 first? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, library.
Okay, item 13, move to accept the resolution to approve the official submission of the application for state funds as submitted to the Connecticut State Library for the 2018 Construction Grant Program on August 31st, 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? We spoke about this at the last meeting, this is just to create the finality of it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
13B, move to call a special town meeting contingent upon Board of Finance approval of a special appropriation not to exceed $6.5 million for the renovation and expansion of the New Milford Public Library.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we should, what? I, I just think we should discuss the potential of putting this on our upper end. I feel strongly about it and I will put in as much effort as anyone in town to support the project via referendum.
Mr. Grimes?
The procedure is as follows. The Board of Finance needs to take up the special appropriation request of the council on Wednesday night at its regular meeting. Can decide, recommend how it's funded, whether it's by bonds, whether it's using a fund, whether it's holding a bake sale, however. And then there would need to be a town meeting called. In order for, to get to referendum, as Councilman Samansky suggests, there would need to be a special town council meeting within five days prior to the referendum to remove the item from the town meeting agenda and elevate that to a, to a referendum vote, which can be done either one of two ways. Either seven to 14 days following the special town meeting, which I think your resolution should be Wednesday, September 26th, or, or at any other scheduled vote, which, the only one scheduled right now is the November 6th general election. But the prerequisite to all of it is that the town council calls a special town meeting first.
So...
Okay, I have discussion. The cost, mayor, of having a referendum is approximately, cost to the town?
I believe it's eighteen-five, I think.
A standalone referendum, yes.
Is how much, eighteen-hundred?
Oh, I'm asking the mayor, he probably knows the cost of that.
A standalone referendum, there's not a cost that's on the November ballot.
And what would be the potential of having this combined with the November voting? Is that the thinking?
If you did the November referendum, there would be no additional cost because it would be...
So there's a timetable in your packets there.
Yes, but the public doesn't have that, that's why I'm asking that.
Very good, so if the, presuming the Board of Finance approves a special appropriation on Wednesday, then we would have the town meeting scheduled for the 26th. There would be a special town council meeting a week from tonight, next Monday, the 17th, to remove the library question from the town meeting and submit it to referendum. Ms. Pritchard, our town clerk, faces a deadline of Friday, September 21st to get all questions to the Secretary of the State for the November ballot. So it would need to be submitted by then, and if it's submitted by a week from Friday, it would go on the November ballot without the cost of a standalone referendum.
So the 21st today is the 10th, so the 21st is 11 days. There's 11 days to get those questions up to the Secretary of State in order to be on the November ballot along with all the other voting that'll take place. And then this particular item won't cost $18,500.
That's correct.
And then Wednesday, the 26th, is a special town meeting?
That would just be for discussion purposes, the long-term votes could...
But just so the public knows, you have to have a town meeting anyway.
Correct, to consider but not vote upon.
Right, and in that town meeting discussion, is that a two-way discussion? Is it a, as we have comment, is it discussion? Does the committee of modernization or the library trustees need to be there? Would it be Q and A?
You know, it is, it is really the prerogative of the, of the moderator. Most meetings of this nature, it's called a seven-seven town meeting, meaning you're considering but not voting upon, would have a presentation of the proposal folks are going to vote on about referendum. And the group sponsoring it, in this case, the library, Board of Trustees, would take Q and A from the public about the proposal. And people would be free to either speak in favor of or against the library proposal.
They would, it would be such as our public comment here, but there would be ability to answer questions.
That is correct.
Mike?
Why, why do you feel so strongly about a referendum?
Just like if we're spending money on a community center or any other large capital...
Well, we didn't do that for the turf fields, did we?
Well, no.
So what difference is in that?
I think we should have, quite obviously.
Well, I think a town meeting is fine, it needs to go to a referendum.
Councilman Gold, just so you're aware, all the council is doing tonight is calling a town meeting. A decision on a referendum would be made at a special town council meeting next Monday.
Yeah, I understand.
Dr. Mullin?
Who would call that special town council meeting? If it's not called, then there is no special town council meeting and it's a town vote on the 26th, correct?
We'd have to call it.
Who is we?
From there, we have to call.
So it'd be your decision to call the special meeting or not?
Oh, we don't even vote on it here, right?
That's the prerogative of the council.
But we're not even voting on that, we'd have to vote it.
Next.
Yeah, you know, when, when I ran as a councilman, again, for what is now my third term, one of the things that really upsets me is the fact we have these town meetings and the turf fields was one of them. And the only people that showed up were the people in favor of the turf fields. And everyone else was afraid to speak up, I don't think that's right. And as I said earlier, I'm one of the hugest proponents of this project and I believe when we work together as a group, all of us, we're gonna get this project approved through the referendum. It is a project this town desperately needs. You know, we've heard from Lucy Wildrick, who's spoken to the fact of our downtown nucleus, how this adds to that. And it's something that I think we as a community, more than almost anything else in this town, need to rally around. And what better way to do that than to show a resounding vote of all the taxpayers?
And save the eighteen-five by, you know, it's a little bit of a caveat to save eighteen and a half thousand dollars? You know, I think we'd all agree to that. And why have a special vote when we're so close to the November date?
Back to Dr. Mullin's point, so who calls it?
I'd call it for next week.
You call it, not the town council?
No, because we have to meet next Monday.
Either way.
Okay, as long as we're clear.
I, I think the town charter allows either, it has to be one vote of the town council to have a special meeting.
Now, you could make, make the motion tonight or the mayor could pull it with three days' notice. And I think you've got a pretty defined purpose, I mean, well, first of all, also, I will preface this, all of it's contingent upon the Board of Finance passing something on Wednesday. They could turn it down Wednesday and then none of this stuff will happen.
This Wednesday is their date, right, so of course, that could be the deciding thing right here.
You're talking about turning down the project?
They could turn down the project or ask for more information and table it and then you're, you're out of the November election game.
Do they know the deadline for it? Do they know the deadline?
I will be at the Board of Finance meeting Wednesday and I will explain that to them.
Are we that, we are that close to the deadline for putting on the November ballot?
Yep, that's probably Mark Research's one.
So the motion here, again, the motion for the council tonight is to call a special meeting for Wednesday, September 26th, 7:00 PM.
Yep.
Yes.
Walter, before?
Second.
Yep.
Yes?
There we go. Okay, we call it.
September 26th.
I will pass around the resolution for the town.
We get that next one.
The special meeting will be next Monday, 17th.
Special council meeting.
We don't have a Board of Finance Wednesday?
Wait, who?
Yeah, we do, we gotta wait for...
Are we taking the vote on this meeting?
We just went around.
No, no, we did the...
Wait a second, timeout, timeout.
The only thing we do is talk about the meeting for September 26th, right?
Thought this is what we were voting on.
That, that's the town meeting resolution.
The town meeting resolution.
I didn't know there was a resolution on the table.
Not spend the money, it's to call, I did just to get a consensus of calling the meeting for Monday night.
No, oh, no, I'm with, I'm with Dr. Mullin. I, I always thought we were voting on having the meeting, that meeting.
I thought this is what I was voting on, so that was a mistake, let's, let's go back.
Let's go back.
Where did that come from?
This came from the town attorney. I thought this is what we were voting on.
I understand, I didn't know he knew that.
Because that is what is on the agenda.
That's on the agenda, is what we just voted on.
So I thought what we were voting on was on the agenda.
And I think it's premature for, I think the mayor should call a meeting Thursday morning after Finance.
Is that enough time?
Is it enough time?
No, I, I, except the meeting canceled.
So the resolution that I was just passing around, it's for a special town meeting.
So just, so just real quick, I'm just asking for a consensus, I'm not asking for your vote. Cause I can call it, how about that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is what we're gonna do. Again, Walter, if everything is okay, the Board of Finance...
This is for a special...
This is for a special meeting, I will call for Monday night.
A week from tonight.
For a week from tonight.
Thank you.
I'm asking for, just your opinion, consensus, Councilman Bear?
Yes.
That's the one I need.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, second time.
Thank you?
Yes.
Thank you?
Definitely not.
Okay.
So? You really would vote no?
I voted no for a special meeting.
Yep.
So I explained, I explained my view by the last...
All right, now we have to vote on what's on the agenda.
Right, so now we're calling for a resolution, right?
Want me to read it, you want me to read it, Bear?
Yep.
Okay, lecturers of the town of New Milford and those entitled to vote therein are hereby warned and notified to meet at New Milford Town Hall, 10 Main Street, New Milford on September 26th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Ecall Martin Room for the following purposes: to consider and vote upon a special appropriation supplemental to the annual budget of $6.5 million recommended by the Board of Finance for the proposed renovation and expansion of the New Milford Public Library; two, to do any and all things legally necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purpose. The call of this special town meeting is contingent upon the Board of Finance's approval of the appropriations resolution.
Are we doing a referendum?
No, we have to take that.
We have to have that discussion meeting, Mike.
Mike, read, read that sheet.
Does he have a copy of this? Do you have a copy of this, Michael, 13B? And we have to have a discussion meeting in order to have a referendum.
You have to schedule a town meeting in order to get a referendum.
You do.
So what are we doing on the 17th?
It's a town council.
It's a town council meeting.
Special town council meeting.
For...
To do a referendum.
That's my bedtime, this absolutely drives me out of my depth in mind.
To change the town meeting to a referendum, that's why Dr. Mullin voted no, because he's a proponent of just the town meeting and not the referendum.
That's what I said.
Correct.
I was just...
Are we allowed to comment on this thing? Are we a comment? Is it gonna be big enough in here to have this town meeting? Can we have it somewhere else? Is that possible? Because it's gonna be...
I think you'd have the town meeting somewhere else.
Because I know that we did the fields at...
Is there a reason you wouldn't want to have it here?
It's gonna be mopped, isn't it?
If the Council of the Day, if the, if the council votes next Monday to elevate the town meeting to a referendum, there'll be nothing to vote on at the town meeting.
You're right.
Okay. Good.
All right.
So...
So you have the motion.
So we have the motion.
Second.
Any discussions?
But who made the motion?
I did.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mike's gonna abstain.
Okay. Michael, has, Michael's got any questions before you go away?
I don't get the setup. I, I don't understand the procedure. I honestly don't understand all the moves on the first. It's very confusing.
I'll call you in.
Thanks.
Mike, I'll, I'll...
All right. Mike, Mike, hold on, you gotta find it. Even though you don't understand it.
Item 14, Mayor's Office?
Nope.
I'm sorry, back to... I'm sorry, item 12.
No, 11.
We didn't do 11?
No.
11.
Oh my God.
I love the job.
Okay, item 11, personnel. Move to open discussion and possible action on 11A, updated job description of the road construction supervisor.
Second.
Surveyor.
Surveyor, sorry. Eyes are dry.
Blair?
It's windy.
These, these are new jobs, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Good evening, everybody.
Both.
Both are correct. So the road construction surveyor, it's a new job. The mayor had asked me to reach out to the city of Shelton, as they had a very similar position, and I did that. I also went to CCM, as well as the Society of Human Resource Management, and compiled this document, which I think does a pretty good job of just explaining exactly what the surveyor's responsibilities are gonna do.
So basically, as I said in the mayor's comp, folks, I'm sorry, okay?
I just, I have a question, Greg. You've marked, you've started out the title as a durational title. Would you please define that for all of us?
The durational has actually been updated. This is gonna be a permanent employee. So the job description that is in your attention...
So we don't have an updated copy. Is there anything else changed on, on this since that?
No, there's no other changes. And the document that you have, the 11A attachment, should not have durational on it.
It does.
It does.
And there's no salary range.
That's right.
So the salary range is still being determined and has to be approved by the mayor. From the description, that description should not have the durational on it. That was updated this afternoon and completely taken off.
So I have a, I have a question, and I apologize for my ignorance, but part of our responsibility is fiscal fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. So if there's no salary on here, I can't approve this.
Me neither.
Yeah, I'm with you, Lisa.
Without any salary, you know, we could be anywhere.
From, from the research that I did...
That's not the same. It's not in the job description, Greg. I don't mean to cut you off, and I don't mean to be contrary, but I'm, we've been involved in these job descriptions and changes and new ones, and I think when we discussed it, we made it clear that we needed to have, if nothing else, a range. So I'm, I'm a little dismayed that we have something in front of us to talk about, and it was changed this morning. Do we not, Mayor, put out an agenda that says this is the final agenda, the revised, and that's it? What causes changes?
So let's table it instead of beating it again.
Yeah, I agree. I, I, I'm not...
Second.
So it's a motion to table, I would go along with that?
Motion to table.
11A and 11B.
Yeah. Motion to table 11A and 11B, is that what you said? All right.
And then can we, uh, provide comments to the mayor's office?
Yes, I think that's important. We should all put our comments to the mayor's office, or should we send them directly to HR?
Send them to the mayor.
Send them to the mayor. Okay, so moving on...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Moving on to item 12. Move, item 12B, we're gonna move up first, and we have an update from the acting director of finance, I'm sorry, director of finance? I don't remember what you already...
So not a motion to table?
Are you acting or are you not?
Doesn't that make A superfluous? I don't know.
Right. Let's just...
Okay, good evening.
Yeah, I think within one item, we can move an A up, right? Okay, so let's do the presentation first.
Okay. All right, this is a year-end update, fiscal year 2018 year-end update. As you all remember, in December, the town was faced with a three-point, a $2.3 million deficit due to the state reducing the funding for the town. As a result, several steps were initiated to address this situation, which were, number one, an assignment of $1.5 million of 2017 surplus, a spending freeze, a hiring freeze, and layoffs. As a consequence of these actions, fiscal year 2018 results were favorable, with the town realizing a modest surplus in the range of $100,000 to $200,000 on a GAAP basis. These favorable operating results culminated in the town not having to utilize the $1.5 million in assigned fund balance. These funds are currently available to the town. This is on a budgetary basis. The revenue variance was $2.37 million, primarily due to the cut in state aid. The town expense variance was approximately $2.8 million under budget, and the board of ed expense variance was $328,000 under budget. The town expense variance was, that's just a breakdown of the percentage of where the savings were realized, the continued enforced fringe benefits, other, which is like 67 different line items that makes up that, that dollar amount, park and rec, police, public works, and debt service was a reclassification of WPCA that, that gets put on their books, so that occurs every year.
Can I ask a question? No, can I go back and ask a question?
Greg, could you go back to the question?
Yep.
Since we don't, I don't have this in front of me. So what, from my perspective here, the green, that 26%, that's the other, which is $751,000?
Right.
What's the largest other item in that?
There were several. Do you have the...
Well, one, did one rise to the top as the largest?
No, it's the fire department, $88,000, if you remember. Jim Furlow had money budgeted that he didn't use because they got a grant. Public Works is $78,000. Contingency, we didn't use all that money.
So it's really a bunch of small dots.
So Greg, I have, I'm, I'm just curious, would it be possible, not now, but maybe going forward, to come up with some amount and say that if it's over that? Because 751,000 is this much.
Right.
The fire department's this much, public works is this much. So maybe you could come up with something just to separate it out?
To, to show the total of 750,000.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, maybe I'm the only one who cares.
Do a, do a breakout pie chart.
Pick, yeah, pick a number and put that in its own little pie.
And, and show, yeah, it's, it's a lot of little, believe it or not, it's a lot of little line items that add up to the 751. I think there's like 76 or 67, 67 line items.
Well, these top, the top two for here, I think are good. Just something to think about, that's all. Sorry, you just got...
That's fine, yeah, I'll, I'll pull, so, and actually, it's in the year-to-date budget report that I sent out. It, it's right there, so, but nevertheless.
It's just a big part of the pie, that's why I was curious.
Okay, but those are the top five. Okay, so due to the favorable operating results of 2018, Moody's via ratings review eliminated the town's negative outlook, citing our conservative budgeting, sizable tax base, and sound fund balance and cash positions, as well as the town's response to adverse budgetary challenges created by the state. So it's good news, folks.
It's good news.
It's really good news.
And again, for that, for us, that means that we're gonna have more people interested in investing in the town, correctly, because we've got such a strong bond rating?
We got the negative outlook, and they affirmed our double A1 rating. And this sets the table for when we go to the bond market in January. So this was like a preview, it was like a dry run, if you will, of, if we're converting our bands to bonds and we have to do an official statement, we'll have to go to, through another formal ratings review. So they, they asked questions, I mean, I, I have them here, about economic development, which the mayor did a wonderful job on. And frankly, a lot of the expenditure savings and, and the policies that were put in place, the mayor deserves credit on that, because I could, I could only advise, but if my advice isn't heated, he's the one, he's the hammer. He executed those policies, so, you know, the mayor's, you know, thank you for all you do. Every time he has a department head meeting goes, he thanks us for all we do. And I think it's, you know, justifiable that, you know, we thank you for all you do.
So all the good stuff, is it worth 25 basis points, 10 basis points, the next time they float a bond, because we've got some big bond packages potentially coming?
Listen, we, we always do better than the federal funds rate, so this is good news for us, guys. I mean, it's really good news.
The better rating, the better, the better rate you'll get?
The better rate, yes.
Because you're not a higher risk.
Right.
It's just like an individual.
Exactly. And they, they really liked the way we handled the, the deficit and, and the results that were realized as, as affected by our efforts.
And there are also other investors that would not buy your bonds because you have a negative washout. So expand your pool of investors that will look at your bonds.
You know, they were looking at our pension, they were looking at our debt, they were looking at our, our plans, but really the focus of their ratings review was how we handled 2018, how we handled that adversity. And we just had all good news to tell them. And frankly, our financial advisor was actually pushing for a triple A rating, so he wasn't very, you know, shy about doing that. So that's, that's something that is, is within range. It's, it's one of my goals before I ride off into the sunset to get New Milford their first triple A rating, whether I can do it or not, whether we can do it or not. It's not, it's all of us. It benefits all of us.
Right.
So that's a goal to work towards, and that will be the first time New Milford would be at a triple A rating. So it's a goal that we can all shoot for. Any questions? If, if, if you have, no, go ahead.
I just wanna go back, so our one and a half million, the assigned fund balance, now that's available to be used for whatever?
Yes, it's, right now, it's an assignment of fund balance. If you want to, it's, it's really up to you, folks, what you do with it. You can reassign it for whatever purpose you deem appropriate.
It's our next agenda.
Well, I thought you were gonna...
No, no. Next item. You're still in the same item there.
Okay, well, there you go. You have the 1.5. What you do with it, I, I provide the, the quantitative analysis, you guys gotta do the qualitative analysis.
Got it. Okay.
So any questions for Greg so far? Okay, so going to C, real quickly, as we talked about the...
12C?
Yep, we talked about the 1.5 million dollars is available, and I personally think we need to put that to work for our taxpayers. So I'd like to bring some...
You know? Paul, Katie, Katie, one more?
Yep. So the 1.5 million dollars, I've come up with some capital that we had to take out due to budgetary constraints, and also capital that we can earmark that are needs, not wants. So as you can see, on the first one is, we have an opportunity to get a fire truck. Million, what is it, a million three, million two? $900 some thousand dollar grant. Well, I'd like to take 350,000, this 1.5, for the town's share of the grant. That's about a 32 cents on the dollar opportunity. Seems like a great investment. The next is, I'd like to show you guys, one of the things, when I've been talking with the Public Works, is I meet with them every week, and the citizenry themselves, they tell me time and again about the potholes. And they keep saying how the potholes, when they get filled, they come right up, right away. So one of the things that's great is we have new technology that's come out. Need another one?
You got enough?
You know it? Do you know it? So this one here is the PS5. It's a one-man pothole solution machine. Actually, you can all do it by, by one guy, not the six guys we got now. So...
I have a question.
So...
Well, I've seen them six...
We can, we can, we can gear them to the other opportunities that we need to do within our DPW. So I'm asking for, of this 1.5, 300,000 to 35,000, the spray injection pothole filling machine with emulsion tacks, which we're gonna call our Pothole Patrol.
The Potty Patrol?
Pothole Patrol.
Pothole.
Pothole Patrol.
Pothole.
Pothole Patrol.
Okay, next.
Next, one of the things we talked about is connecting the riverfront to the downtown, and the opportunity to do so. Right now, we have that quarter mile that's down there, nowhere else to go with it. So one of the thoughts there, you connect Youngsfield Road, where the connection is, we're gonna go up Youngsfield, we're gonna go up Youngsfield via Patriots Way to the railroad cross, crossing with a sidewalk. What's that do? Is it brings the people from the riverfront or from the downtown, vice versa, to each other. It cements part of our one-mile loop, and it creates the vitality to begin with. That's kind of our beginning process.
Where's this sidewalk now?
So the sidewalk would be where we have the Riverwalk now, and then you have at the very end where DPW is, that's where it stops, so you have the crosswalk there. So you go across the street to where Youngsfield Road starts, and where Patriots Way starts, up the hill. So we create a sidewalk there to go up Patriots Way, and then that would take you into where the downtown is, and then you could go right into the railroad crossing and into the downtown.
There's actually street lighting along the...
Yes.
Or anywhere.
So street lighting already there for that.
Oh, you mean it comes almost like connecting...
Correct.
...the Riverwalk to the...
Yep.
Correct.
Lissy Wildrich, we spoke earlier, has been working with the mayor's office on creating one-mile education, and making it really inviting.
The next one is the Economic Development Director relocation. We may not need that money, but I just budgeted for that in case we do get a high-powered person that does want to come and has to move from out of state. Because we are having people that we're looking at, that are looking at out of state, that may be coming in. Same with the marketing budget, one of the things we've heard time and again, is we need continued marketing for our town to bring people to come in. So, we're gonna invest in that. The next is the land surveyor position that we talked about before with benefits.
So, the numbers are here.
Yeah, so I have the numbers here and not on the job description.
Wow.
All right.
With the perfect, also with the professional engineer, the same with benefits. That includes the insurance as well, and these two positions are gonna save us money in the long haul. Just as I said before, right now, we spent $400,000 on consultants last year. As you can see by adding these two jobs, which will be 100% committed to New Milford, it's gonna get us on projects faster. We're gonna be on time, we're gonna be able to hit the market with the spring. Dr. Mullin.
I'm assuming these salaries and insurance would be for 12 months?
Yes, sir.
So, we really only need about half of that, correct?
We can back it up, yes, sir.
So, instead of those 12, 200, so we really only need 100,000.
And once the numbers come in, we can firm them up more, but that was just kind of my calculation. Also, we're gonna need a total station and a vehicle for the surveyor. In other words, that's the machinery that he needs to do this as a one-person surveyor, and also he's gonna need a vehicle to do that. The next is parking wreck. I spoke with Dan Calhoun. During our budget, we cut their request for an 11.5 wide-area mower and a 61-inch zero-turn mower. Those mowers are at the end of life, they're ready to go. A couple of times, the bigger mower broke down this year, which they weren't able to cut grass. Got us behind in our grass cutting and maintenance. So, we have the opportunity now to buy this new capital. That way, they can get on to it, not have to worry about the machines breaking down, and they're off to the races. The next one is the youth agency for 40,000. Revenue will be offset, this equally, however, did not reduce the reduction line in the budget. So, we're bringing that back from the budget. The next was the building maintenance cargo van. That was cut in the budget, and this is gonna avoid their request for the upcoming budget. So, we're gonna save money, right there. JPS roof repairs, we heard from our facilities maintenance, there are roof leaks.
I've never heard that.
Okay? Man, like, we heard that.
Yeah. New to me.
So, that was cut in the budget. We're gonna put that in this year's budget, so we're gonna take it out of here. It's a reduction in the upcoming budget.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, do I need to make a motion, or does someone need to make a motion to extend our time to end to...
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to extend our town council time to 10:45 to allow publication of the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next is the...
They proposed, right then.
Next is the JPS roof repairs. We have to do it. I mean, so, there's the 50 there, that avoids the upcoming budget. The next is, when you go to the police department, their stairs, their treads are pretty ripped up. Somebody's definitely gonna fall. That was a request to cut in the budget. This will avoid the request in the upcoming budget. The next is at the MAX for the roof. The roof is past its life. How was it? Katie?
I have a question. That's a flat roof. Are we gonna replace it with another one? I don't know, you know, we live in New England, flat roofs are not prudent.
I just wondered that too, why there's so many flat roofs.
Well, we have a brand-new one on the back of the senior center, and the guy who put it there told me, oh, no, it's not that flat. Well, flat, flat. So, I'm just asking, what, for 70,000, what are they gonna really replace it? They gonna rip it up? What is it, tarred? I don't even know what it looks like up there.
That was term, that was in our budget this past fiscal year, so Buildings, Facilities, Maintenance, said that was the cost to replace the roof.
Replace the roof.
It was in the budget, we knocked it out?
Yep, we knocked it out.
Right. And it was to replace it, which means replace.
Correct.
Do you know what it is? Is it chiseled?
I don't know, but I thought it was arched.
All right.
So did I.
Okay. Well, you said teen center, first of all, I didn't know what that was.
Sorry. The next is a Ventrac turbo blower, and this is gonna help with our roads and parking lots. Also on top of that, this piece of equipment, because we need to, for the Riverwalk, the way that it's been designed, you have to blow it out or vacuum it. So, this thing does all of that.
Okay. Sounds interesting.
Uh, yeah. The, uh, that's gonna save us a lot of time. This blower.
Can they use it to blow the snow away, instead of having to bring out the little plow thing?
Blow the...
Yeah, blow light snow.
That's what I thought. Okay, that's good. That's good.
Also, two small compact SVUs for the building and land use. When you're talking about the building department, we have a, an older SUV, it was so old that the actual gas tank fell out, and they had to tape it to get it to the gas station.
It is old.
So, pretty embarrassing. So, we need to, while we have the opportunity, let's get the right thing, so when we do drive up to our building developers, our businesses that are investing in our town, we look appropriately around a truck that's got a gas tank falling out of the bottom. The next is 25,000 for the John Pettybone Landscaping. This was a zoning approval in 2017. It's required. I had three bids put out. This was the lowest one we had, something that we have to do by October, so I recommend that we do it.
All right, question?
Yes, ma'am.
This is required just to keep it status quo for the people that are there?
Correct.
This is not an indication that we are going to allow other people...
This is just to keep it open.
Right, thank you.
And then lastly, is the Spider Guardrail Mower 60. So...
Is that Spider GRM for a parking wreck or a Public Works?
It's for both. So, I don't have...
Those guys don't share.
I don't have enough. Well, they're gonna share this, Dr. Mullin, let me tell you that.
I don't know.
So, basically, when you take a look, one of the things that, that as you see as a regular resident, that I get a lot of complaints about, is how the guardrails are not mowed underneath. Whether we use a herbicide, or whether it's not done. So, looking through, we knew, we now have technology. The technology now is you, as you put that on the actual tractor, and it does it itself. So, now...
So, it's a tractor.
Right, so now you only need the one person. Not...
You got how many?
Not two or four. So, my recommendation is, is we use this money, put it to work for our citizenry.
I saw your question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the repairs for, we've got two roof repairs here, right?
Yep.
Are those going out for bid?
Absolutely, they have to go out for bid.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the Board of Finance a special appropriation not to exceed 1.5 million for the following purchases, as entered into the record by Mayor Bass, and we'll attach that to the record, and to recommend said appropriation be funded as follows, an amount not to exceed 1.1 million from the bond premium, and an amount not to exceed 400,000 from unassigned fund balance.
Second. Any discussion?
Mayor, my only concern are the ones for the two positions, it's more money than we need, just keep us up to date on that money.
Yes, sir.
Right, because that could be about 100,000.
Yeah, 200,000 easily.
Right, right. And the 20 for re-low that we might not need. So, potentially, it's 120,000. We'll keep updated on that.
Will our paychecks be bigger next year?
I heard they're gonna double them all too.
We have a motion...
200% of zero.
So, we have a motion and a second.
You told history, not me.
Right, Stephanie, you got that?
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. And next is the...
Hold on, and then, should we put this on the, did we decide we're having the special town council meeting?
Wait, we have one more.
This one is before the regular town council meeting, the 24th, right before that.
Oh, okay.
Different county.
So, we don't need to...
Oh, okay. We've got a different motion, different day there.
Okay, so then I'd make, like to make a second motion, because this is greater than one-fifth of one mil, we need to have a special town meeting for this.
Okay.
So, I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor to call a special town meeting for September 24th, 2018. That's our regular town council meeting at 6:30 PM, for the purposes of considering said special appropriation not to exceed 1.5 million contingent upon the prior approval of the Board of Finance.
Second.
Paul, how about 6:45?
Yeah, I...
6:45 as noted by Dr. Mullin.
No, no, there's a public hearing. There's a public hearing scheduled at 6:45, that's why the resolution's...
Oh, that's right, there is. Good thinking, man.
The continued public hearing on those ordinances.
Right.
So, that's why the town meeting is 6:30.
Okay.
Yeah, we got it, anyway.
Okay. Paul.
What do you want? What do you want?
Paul's document.
Oh, you have a spreadsheet?
Yep. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Okay, so now...
Okay, next.
We move back to item 12A, motion to approve naming Greg Asapow as Director of Finance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Greg, do you want the job? I'm gonna be floored on the bill. All right, Greg.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, I think that under Greg's tenure as Acting Director of Finance, I think he's worked very hard hand-in-hand with the mayor's office to deal with the very hard situation that we were dealt with by the state of Connecticut, and I think all parties involved have performed admirably.
I second that. Absolutely.
And his assistant too, working well with him.
Olga, yes.
Can't leave her out as well.
Comptroller.
No, she goes to me, but I...
Comptroller, sorry. Sounds a lot better than the assistant, you're right. I stand corrected.
Any other discussion? All of in favor? Opposed? Congratulations, Greg.
Okay, moving on to item 14, Mayor's Office. We have a motion to act per, pursuant to the Charter 602G regarding execution of a proposed forbearance agreement between the Town and the Milford and Musatonic Real Estate II LLC relating to Medinstel LLC properties. And I think we all have a copy of that.
These are in your packets, Dr. Mullin.
Forbarance agreement.
Second. Second.
What's it about?
So, this is, I've been working with Medinstel. There has been a dispute concerning one of the properties that's been held, and the dispute was concerning the value and the square footage. The result in the dispute has been in a tax arrears, it's been for several years. So, I've been speaking with Medinstel, they're agreeing by signing this document, they're gonna make monthly payments as the tax assessor goes back out, reviews the property, to see if there is a dispute, if there's some validity to it. As they're doing that, in good faith, they're doing this agreement, making monthly payments. They're also working with us with some of their properties that they're not working with to help us set up a advanced manufacturing, and an also bioscience institute in tandem with Noggetuck Valley Community College. That's an opportunity that we're looking at as well. So, I just needed to bring this to the council, for their council's approval for me to sign that. That's basically what this page says. Katie?
We, just along that line, I don't want to read anymore. Don't show me another piece of paper. Jesus, wait a second. One more question.
So, Dr. Mullin, I have, I was just gonna say, I know you don't want to read it, I'm just gonna give you the high point here, that the, it's 526,989 and 89 cents is the tax arrears, and by doing this, they're gonna give us monthly payments of 25,000, and should they not? Because I was a little concerned about what happens if they just don't make the payment, or they're late, or whatever. We agree if they do make the payments, that we will not enforce actions or proceedings in connection with that, we won't bring the forbear. So, those I thought were two important points you might want to know about?
No, thank you.
You didn't care how much they owe us?
No. Lots of details I don't...
Do we have a motion?
No, I have a question.
Yes, Dr. Mullin.
There's property, Medinstel has a long water, that the bike trails been discussing might use. Has there any been, any discussions with Medinstel concerning usage of their property?
Yes, so I have, I have...
That's all I need to know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No one knows the discussion.
Don't bother me in the details, I just need concepts right now.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Go ahead. Sign it, go crazy.
I'm B.
Okay.
Discussion regarding the high school roof.
So, just real quick for discussion, I've met with, last week, I met with Superintendent Tracy, I met with their finance, direct, their finance person, Greg met with them as well, I met with Mr. Moret, their facilities person in our DPW. Make a long story short, we talked about the roof. They are looking at a few options they wanted us to kind of take a look at. There are three options. One, we can continue and just put in patches on the roof that we currently have as it is now. Their belief is, the roof life on that is already expired, it's 20 years. You could do that, but at some point in time in the next year or two, you're gonna have to take off the roof anyway, that's their thoughts, the shingles. The other thought is to redo the roof as it is today with the asphalt shingles. In so doing with that, because this roof was 20 years old, you now have to upgrade to the new rules and regulations, which would require some additional insulation that's put on the roof, which may result in having to put in new gutters around the whole building as well. The third option is to actually put on a tin roof, steel roof, with a cost. It would be a 50-year lifespan versus a 20-year lifespan. There's the ability to put solar on there, they had a consultant come in, and this particular consultant only had the solar putting on for a very small footprint of the building. I did let them know when the consultant was there, is depending on where everyone thought this would go, it actually would have to go through our purchasing authority, so there really couldn't be any, anybody now until the purchasing authority saw the bids. But they wanted us to let us know that there are these options that we have. I did recommend to them, is if you're gonna go to do solar, you need to do pretty much the full roof. That could be done at a later time as well, you know, maybe you could prepare for that. But it's something we're gonna be bringing forward, we're meeting with them again next week, which I'll bring back to the council, or tomorrow, I'm sorry, I'm bringing, bringing back to the council at the next meeting with some more information.
Who's them, that you're meeting with, I'm...
We're meeting with the Board of Ed.
Oh, okay.
So, they're coming back, correct.
Right, but our purchasing department will be involved because the money's gonna be coming to the town.
Correct, so we'll have to come...
So, we may want to entertain some other people in this discussion.
Well, now we bring them back to the councils, how, depending on what we want to do, how we're gonna pay for it.
Pete, I know there was some damage from the storm in May, was there insurance out there, claim put on?
There is.
And was it prorated per the age of the roof?
It's just, it's enough, right Greg, I believe, just patch it.
It's 1.5 million, whatever that 1.5 million will get us.
So, the insurance covered the 1.5 million on the high school roof?
The damages.
So, that's what we have to work with right now, on top of what, yeah.
Right now, without any, you know, going to any other options. That's what, that's what we, what we would probably have to put the money up front to get, until we get reimbursed after the job's done and inspected or whatever.
But we have 1.5 million in a kitty right now.
That's to set aside by PERMA.
From the insurance.
Right.
That's all, okay.
Right.
So, it's something.
Yes.
We don't have it, though.
Paul?
Just quick, I'd like to get a copy of the specs for the original high school. I find it extremely hard to believe that the roof shingle life would only be 20 years.
Yep, seeing with the specs for the roof. Yeah.
Year 18, yeah.
And one of the things that they did, they did mention that I wanted to bring to the council's attention, was they talked about that there's been, that the shingles blow off that roof all the time. So, I had asked them, I'm like, well, I'm thinking it's only twice. But, I mean, Greg was there, they blow off every year, and the averages between...
15,000?
Yeah, between 10 and 15,000 dollars a year they're doing on shingle replacement. So, I just took the middle, right.
Didn't tell anybody that.
So, I just took the middle, which is 12, 12.5, over 20 years, and it's like 250. 250,000.
Right, so someone made an executive decision, I mean with a capital E, to replace every year 15 grand worth of shingles that were blown off, and it never filtered up.
It makes no sense, though, we don't have wind strong enough if the roof's properly installed.
I agree with you, you know, schools off in the Midwest have roofs.
I know there's water coming to the school. You see it a lot.
So, I'll bring that back, and then we'll rise to councils the next.
I'm gonna have to make another motion if we don't pick it up.
Okay, so we're done with that.
Thank you.
Next is the AARP.
All right, I move to accept 5,183 dollars from the...
Second.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Stephanie, take it off the agenda.
Thank you.
Item 15, Candlewood Lake Authority, move to take the action regarding the Candlewood Lake Authority 2018, 2019 appropriations, per the attachment and closure you all have.
So, basically, real quick, what this basically says is, we reduced Candlewood Lake Authority's, our contribution to the Candlewood Lake Authority. I had Town Attorney Matt Grimes opine on it, because we're doing this regionally, and because, as you can see on these shares, powers, and other duties from the Code of Ordinances, each municipality shall pay the Candlewood Lake Authority's respective share by an equal division of the budget.
And that's 9,900 dollars we owe them? Is that correct?
Because everyone else did more, right?
Well, we all do the same amount.
Candlewood Lake statute, so we're gonna pay it up.
Right, it's 9,900 dollars, that's a second.
Um, I'm in favor, I'm sorry.
Vote.
Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.